[S01]The first step is to identify the target area. You need to identify the target area by looking for patterns, lines, and other visible signs. Once you have these patterns, you can start looking for more information about the area. You can also look for other areas that might be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation. If you find something that could be affecting the area, you can go ahead and look for it. You can also look for other areas that may be affected by the situation.
I think it's just the first one, I think.
The way she changed the numbers.
Yeah.
Hey, when you become mayor, do you mind running the meetings from here? Because I kind of like all this extra space. You're gonna... He's laughing, he's not taking my idea seriously.
I don't care, whatever it is where, I can run it from home. As long as I have little buttons and I can just go.
They all here? All right, I want to welcome everybody to the February 25th, 2013, meeting of the San Carlos City Council and successor agency, successor agency to the redevelopment agency, which you all stand for the plinth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I apologize to everybody for our tardy start, but we had a meeting before this that we had to take care of, and here we are. Item two is changes to the order of the agenda, does anybody have any need to change the orders?
No changes from staff this evening.
Nothing, okay, very good. Item three is report from closed session.
Mr. Mayor, there are no reportable items from the closed session, but I did want to point out that there was a typographic error in the special meeting agenda referring to Government Code Section 54956.9B and C, and effective January 1st, that section has been superseded by a new numbering system, and the subsection would be the same Government Code section, but it would, instead of being B and C, it would be D2 and D4.
Thank you for pointing that out. Our next item is council communications and announcements, does anybody have anything to share? Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I actually just wanted to say that I very much enjoyed, as I suspect a lot of other people did, the State of the City presentation that was done, and I liked the different format, and I'm actually wondering when you and Councilmember Grisilli are going to launch your cable TV show, I think, you know, Good Living with Bob and Matt might, might do it, or Matt and Bob.
We've already started that, actually.
Good for you, watch for it.
Anything else?
I, I just have one thing, first of all, I want to, I did speak to the mayor about this, but I wasn't able to meet, to go to the State of the City address due to a prior commitment, personal commitment, and I did inform the mayor of that before, just so everyone understands. And the other thing is I attended the Adult Community Center crab feed last night, there were a few people in the audience that were there, Mr. Davis, Mr. Rivano, and it was very successful, I think they had over 200, 225 people, I was at table 22, so they had at least a couple hundred people, so it was very successful.
I have one thing to report, I want to thank Jay Walter, I got a great tour of our Public Works facilities this afternoon, and got to meet with all the Public Works employees, it's a well-run department, and I got quite an education on what, what they do, and I want to thank Jay again, it was a nice meeting.
Very good, and Ms. Clapper?
Yes, I went to the Council of Cities meeting hosted in Daly City this past Friday evening, and a couple of things that will be coming forward to all of the, all of the council members that they passed out, one is a summary of the financial safeguard questions for board members to ask, where they summarize the information that was presented at that Council of Cities meeting that was here in San Carlos, they did a one-page summary, and they're going to be sending that out as a digital file. And then they also passed out information that will be coming to all of us about on March 20th, a meeting of Peninsula Preparedness Network, with being, the other cities are being invited by Burlingame and Palo Alto to participate, to document best practices and conduct tabletop full-scale exercises in Burlingame and Palo Alto.
All right, very good, thank you. And I have nothing to report, so move on to consent calendar, I believe it is, excuse me, council appointments and presentations, that's right. So we are to consider appointment of council, an ad hoc subcommittee for discussion of school property, you want to say a few words about that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say a few words, as, as you're all aware, the school district is in a planning frenzy for a number of school site-related issues right now, and they have identified a few potential sites that they might want to partner with the city on, currently city-owned property, and a few other sort of joint sites, I think they've met with the council individually, or the superintendent has, and my thought is it would be nice to form a subcommittee of the council, and I might suggest the, the current city two-plus-two members to serve this function, just to serve as a sounding board on some of the ideas that the superintendent and the school board have as it relates to potential sites or joint sites for schools with the city of San Carlos. They're moving very quickly, and they're looking for feedback, and trying to explore what we might be open to and what we might not be open to, and, you know, the thought occurred to me as the superintendent and I were trying to wrestle with some of these issues, that it would be very nice to have a subcommittee of the council that we could bounce some of these ideas off as well.
Okay, thank you, who's on two-plus-two, I've got my thing here, but...
Karen and Ron, I believe.
Karen and, and so down here at this end of the dais, you guys opposed to that, or in favor?
I'd be happy to serve.
That, that sounds fine with me, I would be happy to serve also.
Okay, do we need to make a motion on that, or that's just...
I think a motion would be good.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Councilmember, Councilmember Clapper and Councilmember Collins to the, a new ad hoc subcommittee for discussion of school property issues.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay, and that now brings us to public comment, and I have no speaker cards that I can see for a public comment, but this is for anyone in the audience to speak to the council on items not on the posted agenda, but there is somebody coming forward, looks like Pat Potter.
I'm sorry, I forgot to put that one, I'm Pat Potter, San Carlos, two things, I thought Thursday night was terrific, I really liked the way you did that, I thought it was great, and the other is that we're coming up to an election, and I really would like you to consider rescinding the promise thing that we made Ms. Clapper do, because I think that it's not fair to the public to not have an opportunity to vote for, thanks.
Thank you. And I don't see anybody else, so that's public comment, thank you, Pat. Item seven is approval of the consent calendar, so these will be approved as one item unless somebody from the public staff or council would like to pull an item to discuss it separately.
Through the mayor, if I may, I believe we provided you with an updated copy of the, is this the quarterly financial report?
Yes.
Where there was a typographical error that we discovered earlier?
Yeah.
Where a number was transposed, I just wanted to point that out for the purpose of the public and the city council.
So does anybody want to pull anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I actually, I would actually like to pull that item that Mr. Malpe was referring to, and I'm trying to...
E.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and I wanted to pull item H, but it could be mute after we get on with the meeting, so we'll take these items up at the end, item D and H. So if we can have a motion for all those other items.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve items 7A, B, C, E, F, G, I, and that's it.
Have a second? Okay, we have a second. Roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right.
This won't be moved.
Yeah, okay, all right. Item eight is reports to council, and we've got a status report on city pavement management system.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jay Walter, your Public Works Director, and I wanted to provide you an opportunity to give you a 2013 Status of the Streets for San Carlos, and some additional information as it relates to pavement management. So tonight, I've got a presentation to go through, and I'll try to work through it as quickly as I can, I know you've got some other items later in the evening that you need to get to, but what I'd like to be able to go through with you, at least in part tonight, is how streets deteriorate, for some of the members of council that may not be familiar with that, how a pavement management program works, and how we're putting pavement management into practice in the city of San Carlos. So, get right to the point, the diagram on the screen in black is our hot mix asphalt layer, and then below that, a base layer, which all roads are built from, and then the natural ground, the subgrade below that. So typically what you have is, this denotes a tire, and you have wheel loads that are continually impacting our pavements all through town, and so as that repeated loading bends this flexible asphalt layer, cracks develop, fatigue begins to develop and set in, and that's how these pavements wear out. One of the other things that happens too is the hot mix asphalt dries out over time, so it becomes less flexible, and more prone to cracking, and the problems that develop from cracking. But the big problem is water, and as these photos will show you, the one on the right especially, where standing water will tend to seep into pavement, even pavement that's not completely cracked, once water gets in and under that pavement, that's when you begin to see the real deterioration, and so just as a quick note here, the cracks that develop at this point, the water gets below it and it saturates the base layer, and once that gets saturated, then you start to see that inevitable cracking and other problems that occur. So water is one of our biggest problems. The curve that's on the screen, that's, that's shown with this graph, we have on the left side a quanti, a qualitative sense of street condition from excellent to failed, and then along the bottom, we look at years, and the red line indicates that typically, in the first, say, almost 10 years of a street's life, it stays in a good or excellent condition because of the material it's built from, the quality, and then we begin to see in that 10 to 15-year timeframe, a real significant deterioration, typically a street will, will kind of lose better than 50% of its quality in that period of time. Now this red line reflects streets that aren't treated, so if you just left a street out there to weather over time, you will find most every street will be in a very poor or failed category by its 20-year birthday, and so that's why we look to have pavement strategies that will help us keep streets up in this excellent, good, and maybe the high fare categories. So we look closer at our typical street, some of the types of distress that you will see around town, as well as traveling almost anywhere, in the upper left, you see what's considered alligator cracking, and alligator cracking occurs where one crack, all of a sudden becomes many cracks, largely because of water that infiltrates below it, causing there to be uneven stresses on that pavement surface, resulting in more cracks, and as well, you have an asphalt that ages and it loses its flexibility. In the lower left, you see something which we consider to be block cracking, that oftentimes is temperature-induced, sometimes you'll see roads that are out in mountainous areas where temperature swings can go from overnight in the 30s to over 100 degrees in, in the hot of the daytime, and so that asphalt, again, ages, and it expands and contracts, and finally, it will crack in block form. And then along this right side, there's some cracking that occurs longitudinally with the pavement, and that oftentimes is related to a lack of support on the sides of the pavement for the wheel loads that it has to, has to bear. Other types of pavement distress, you've probably all seen this, where you have a rutting that occurs in the wheel path of travel, and it actually is, it's because the repeated wheel loadings and the weakness of the base below, maybe the road wasn't designed properly, but other times it can be because of cracking and water saturation, but the pavement, in this case, often leads to this condition, which we call shoving or other distortion of pavement. Oftentimes you'll see that at intersections, where you have a lot of braking action from heavy vehicles, and the pavement literally looks like it's shoving around under there, often that's because its asphalt has softened up, temperature has caused it to be softer, and then as braking forces react to it, it shoves, literally shoves that pavement around. And then on the right side, down below, you see what's considered to be weathering and ravelling, and this is where the, the gravel surface in the top of the pavement has come loose, and car tires repeatedly going across it, send it off to the side of the road, oftentimes you have bicyclists who complain heavily about pavement that's raveled, because the shoulder area where they ride is full of rocks and gravel, and it's almost impossible to keep swept, and this is a sign, again, of a pavement that's dried out and is past its useful life. And then there's the dreaded pothole, everybody has experiences with potholes, and of course, as you see these, they start out small and inconspicuous, and then... out small and inconspicuous, and then they grow, and they get larger, they cause more and more problems. And again, the big problem with a pothole is typically from cracks that allow water to infiltrate, and we'll show you a quick little, sort of a lesson on that here. You have a pavement surface that's cracked, water gets below it, and as the wheel loads travel on that pavement, water is not compressible. So when it gets pushed down, it has to push in another direction. What often happens is the fine material in the paving comes out through the cracks in the top, and so you begin to develop a void in that section of pavement, which finally cracks through, and then you end up with a pothole. And there's no pothole patching. All you do is throw some mix back in there, but what you have not done is you haven't addressed the problem in the foundation of that particular pavement. All you've done is given it a short-term, sort of a, okay, we bridged over that hole, but more than likely, that will continue to deteriorate if nothing more is done. So potholes all over town. Our maintenance crew tries to get out there and as quickly as possible, patch those potholes, and then we put those locations on a list as we evaluate each year for paving repair that we need to do. So the city is part of, our pavement management program comes from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. They have a program which they call Street Saber, and essentially, all nine counties and all the cities in those counties use this Street Saber program. And what it does is it uniformly documents conditions and needs so that the MTC can be sure about when they dole out money for paving repair, they're getting kind of an apples-to-apples comparison. A condition of pavement, certain category in one city is essentially the same as in another city, so they know that the dollars are being spent kind of on the same things. It's a budgeting and reporting tool. It has, its basis is looking for cost-effective ways to repair rather than taking a worst-first approach. Worst-first is, your most horrible streets in the worst shape you'd spend all kinds of money on, but you would quickly run out of money if you took that strategy. So this is emphasizing preventive maintenance. So in the city, what we've done is kind of the example shows here, you classify your streets into arterial, collector, residential, and other streets. Arterials and collectors are the ones that take the most traffic, and the residential streets are the ones that serve our homes and properties. There are more residential streets in our city than arterials and collectors, simply because of all the locations where people live. One of the things that we're doing also here at the city is using our GIS capability to help us keep track of the pavement repair projects that we do, so that we can sort them by the year that we did the work, the type of road that we did the work on, or the location within the city. So we're keeping track of that data, and it helps us going forward in the future as we plan for further work that we need to do. The heart of this pavement management program is what's called the Pavement Condition Index. And as you can see, it's a qualitative index ranging from good to excellent with a score of almost 100, down to failed. And as you can see from these examples, a good to excellent pavement would be virtually perfect, almost a new street or a freshly sealed street with no defects or any problems. You begin to get into the at-risk category, where you begin to start to see some cracking occur. When you're past that point, poor pavement has lots of alligator cracking and other cracking. That's significant distress. And then a failed section, which has rutting, cracking, and all other forms of the distress that I had mentioned to you earlier. So that's how all of our streets are kind of weighed, or rated against this type of a scale. So as far as the city goes, how are we doing? Citywide, we have a score of 64. That ranks us in the lower half of other cities within San Mateo County. And as you can see in our arterial network, our Pavement Condition Index is 77, which is in the good category. Our collector streets are slightly below that with a 71. And where we experience most of our problems, in our residential streets. And so that's the most streets we have, and so that tends to draw the score down. And so why is that 64 number critical, and what does it mean? Well, you can see based on where this is located, this is, again, that street distress curve that I showed you before. If we were in the excellent-to-good category, then we'd be up in the range of 78 to 100, and we'd be looking at preventive maintenance strategies on a regular basis at a fairly low cost. We're still in a category where preventive maintenance and seal coats and minor repairs can help us tremendously. So that's a good thing, because if we were down in this range where we were, say, in the 30 to 50 range, then we would be significantly behind, and we would remain significantly behind with the investment that we would need to make in pavement repair. So 64 puts us in a pretty good condition for being able to utilize seal coats and minor repair strategies to keep our Pavement Condition Index about even. So preventive maintenance for your streets, you can liken it to, at your house, putting on several coats of paint over the years versus waiting until the siding rots off the side of the house and then replacing it. And these two curves kind of show that. The red curve shows, they waited until the street completely failed, invested in a huge major rehab to bring it back to very good condition, and that was essentially a huge cost. But along the way, the other street that's in green, they did some seal coats, then a minor rehabilitation, and then seal coats to keep the street at this, in and near this very good range its whole life. So when you think about that from a public perception standpoint, this preventive maintenance strategy is a wise investment versus the, just let it all fall apart and then spend lots of money to try to repair it later. So repair considerations. What do we do with the streets that we need to repair? There's some argument over what's proper preventive maintenance. On the left, you see crack sealing gone crazy. This street is beyond what crack sealing can do for the alligator cracking that's occurring there. This is simply a waste of time and money. What you want to be able to do is you want to be able to seal some cracks and then put a seal coat on there, which then is a better means of keeping the overall surface of the pavement sealed. So this is just something where they probably, all they had was a maintenance crew that had a lot of crack filler, and they had no other means except to go out there and fill cracks. So, again, it won't last very long, and it looks strange. Not only that, but it can tend to be dangerous and slippery with that much crack sealing in it. So our effective pavement repair approach, what we like to do is we like to do crack sealing when it is, when we first begin to see some of the cracks develop, and have the maintenance crew out there and do that work. We then like to do dig-out and repair of some of those areas that are slightly more distressed, where removing patches of pavement and then repaving those can help that underlying condition. The roadway's still in good shape, it just has a few small areas of distress. Then, we like to come through with a slurry seal, micro-surfacing, or a paving, cover it all up, and that, again, extends our life as we look at the preventive maintenance strategies going across the top line on that street distress curve. Typical repairs, again, looking at our street distress curve, we can use seal coats all the way down to the edge, the bottom edge of the fare category, which is probably the mid-50 category. Below that, you begin to have to have pavement overlays and recycling and reconstruction, all much more costly than those top three strategies, seal coats and crack filling. So crack sealing, you've probably seen, this is the operation that typically happens. The guy's going along with a wand with the crack filler, another guy with a little roller kind of helps push it into the crack. That way, they typically will blow the cracks out so that they can get a good amount of crack filler in there. That way, it helps seal the crack better. And then they follow up typically with a slurry seal, which covers over where the crack sealing was done. The slurry seal acts to cover and seal the very minor cracks that crack sealing wouldn't work, because they're just too small. The Cape Seal is another example, where you may have seen in this town where chip seals have been done, where a layer of asphalt is laid down, and then rock chips are spread across the surface and then rolled in place. Oftentimes, they become problematic as those chips come loose for cyclists or people driving cars and throwing those rocks and stuff around. Cape Seal is where you actually put a seal over the top of those chips to help hold them down a little bit better. It's a multi-step process, it's a little more expensive, but it is an improvement over just a plain chip seal. Micro-surfacing is a treatment which has actually about a 1/4 to 3/8 inch thickness to it, and it's applied with an oil and then rolled, and it is very effective at sealing cracks. And if you haven't been able to do crack sealing prior to that, this can oftentimes seal some fairly good-sized cracks, provided that they're cleaned out ahead of time. Very effective strategy, micro-surfacing, short of an overlay. And then an overlay or reconstruction, you've all seen the paver go down the street with that nice, fresh layer of asphalt coming out the back, and you have a very perfect street at the end, all black and nice and smooth, and what everybody likes to see. One of the things that we'll be evaluating this year is what we call a Proposed Area Concept, where we would take a city, the city, and divide it into areas, and we would plan the work that would take place in those areas. The idea is that you would do your underground work in those areas, whether it's public work like our sewer lines or storm drain lines, or private work, which might be water lines or gas lines or other utility lines. You would contact all those providers, you would set it up so that, hey, you know what, in this area of the city next year, do all your work, because the following year, we're going to come through and pave or seal. And then we end up with the way we, that's how we organize that work better going around the city. And there's a little bit of a benefit in that the neighborhood gets a break for a few years from a kind of a disorganized approach at getting work done. One of the things we do not want to see is a freshly paved street that, within six months or a year, would be cut open with a utility trench and then patched back in. That's not a wise investment, nor is it something that our citizens expect from us. So we would look to have this work done the year before, pave or seal the street the following year, and then have several years where we would be in reasonably good shape with that street. So from a budget scenario analysis, I'm going to skip one more slide and just talk about these for a minute. If the council was willing to invest $43 million over the next five years, we could raise our Pavement Condition Index to 84, which is in the excellent category. That's a significant investment, and that's a lot of work. It's not something that I would recommend to you unless we had some sort of a windfall that you couldn't figure out anything else to do with the money. Just put it into the pavement. Let's do that. That's sounding like a better idea after all. But no, let's, if we were to spend 1.8 million per year, we could raise our PCI to 70. 1.5 million per year keeps it at 64, where we are now. The current investment of $900,000 per year causes a slight drop in the PCI over five years, not a significant drop in my mind, because we're still in that category where surface treatments can help us. And then no annual investment at all causes the PCI to drop to 50 in five years and well below 40 and beyond at 20 years. So you can see, there's a variable range of investments that the council can consider depending upon the pavement strategy that they would like us to employ. So funding sources, we're always looking for more money to help us augment the general fund, the gas tax money that the council puts towards street reconstruction. We look for federal funds. We recently were able to get two federal grants to augment our paving program, which is a significant boost. And in the past, the city has been able to get rubberized asphalt grants, which are done on a statewide basis. Typically, they use waste tires as a main ingredient of that rubberized component. So what's next for us as far as pavement goes? This summer, you'll see both the annual street reconstruction project that we'll put out. We will have a pavement repair and resealing project where we will begin to do some patching and sealing of other streets. We will continue to search for grant sources for additional funding, and we're in the process right now to renew our pavement management certification with the MTC. Our streets will be evaluated over the course of the next year, so we'll have a new set of scores to be looking at in 2014. And then we will, we'll bring that back to you at that appropriate time, and then we'll be preparing a budget request next, to your budget for, to recommend an approach for street resurfacing and reconstruction based on our numbers. So at this point, my hope is that we will continue to maintain our streets so that none of the following occur and swallow up cars in potholes or patch potholes with many cones and other kinds of things like that. So if you have questions now, I'd be more than happy to answer them, or if you'd like, I can take them later via email as well.
Take a few questions? Any questions? Mr. Collins has one, and then Mark.
I just had one. I had heard about this, the rubberized street coating, where they use old car tires. Is that used in new pavement these days?
Yes, there is rubberized asphalt concrete that is manufactured, and it has that rubber tire component in it. It tends to be, it can be a little more flexible, so it's not something that you want to use in real hot climates, regularly hot climates. But I guess it has been shown to extend the life to a minimal amount beyond what a normal asphalt concrete mix would be. You do get a slight offset to your cost when you employ the rubber, and that's a grant that comes from the state.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for an interesting presentation, and yes, let's hope we never see anything like that, unless, of course, it's Mr. Malpe's car, because then that'll create, solve the problem very quickly. The question I had was, you talked about streets degrading, and the axis on the chart was time. And intuitively, I guess I would have expected loading to be a factor. In other words, how heavily a street's used. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit, but did you simplify it for us in the presentation, or?
No. The way that you deal with the loading component is, you design a street section to be thick enough to handle a certain vehicle loading. So an example would be, El Camino Real has a very thick structural section for pavement, base, and subbase compared to a residential street kind of somewhere in San Carlos. The expectation is that there will be a lot more heavily loaded trucks using that street more frequently than would ever be visiting some of our residential streets. So that structural section is what gives it that added bearing. So that's why you can take and just use age as the primary factor.
I see. So the only time, the only time loading would be a factor is if either something changed or the loading forecast was off, basically. Some street ended up having a lot of heavy vehicular traffic on it that wasn't anticipated when it was built.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have anything like that in town that you're familiar with?
As far as streets that have been overloaded beyond?
Yeah.
I guess there's nothing that jumps to mind right off the top of my head for where we have, but that's, again, something that the consultant that MTC hires to do the pavement evaluation, they come back with recommended streets that we should be visiting, and they come back, they have taken counts on the streets, and they come back with what they consider to be streets that are deteriorating faster, because they look at the older data as well.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the report. Very well done. All right, our next item is 9A, which is the ordinance. But in deference to our visitors from Redwood City and quite a few folks in the audience who are going to be affected by item 9C, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to take item 9C first, and then we'll get back into order after that. So 9C is the...
So that's based on the number of comments?
It's not based on the comment cards, no. It's just based on the fact that we've got Redwood City officials here, in deference to them as visitors to us. I'd like to take the fire issue first.
As long as that's not offsetting people, anyone who would be here to comment on the reusable bag ordinance.
I wouldn't think so. I've got some cards here, but I don't think it'll...
Thank you.
Okay. So could we have 9C right now?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Jeff Malpe, city manager. I'm going to begin tonight's presentation. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the City of Redwood City staff, city manager Bob Bell, who's here this evening, along with our shared fire chief, Jeff... Bob Bell, who's here this evening, along with our shared Fire Chief Jim Skinner, our Deputy Fire Chief Stan Moppen, and a number of our firefighters, and I imagine support along with them in the back of the room. So I appreciate them all coming tonight. Approximately a year and a half ago, we entered into a shared fire management arrangement with the City of Redwood City. It's been a very, I think, successful model for us, that certainly had a number of hurdles that our staff, our shared fire chief, our shared deputy chief, the battalion chiefs, and our own San Carlos staff have had to work hard to overcome. The professionalism and enthusiasm for providing those services to both the City of San Carlos and the City of Redwood City through this model over the last many months has impressed me greatly with the overall quality of personnel that we have, both internally here in San Carlos, as well as the folks that we're sharing with Redwood City. However, standing up a new department is a challenge, and there were many challenges that we talked about to begin with, in terms of staffing up. We didn't start with a full complement of firefighters, and we certainly didn't start with a full complement of fully trained and ready-to-work firefighters in the full complement of the paramedic, fire engineer, operator, and other specialty duties. And that led to some staffing issues in the department. As you're aware, we did brown out Station 16 for a time being, up on the Alameda. On one of the shifts for a while, Redwood City personnel helped with that, helped cover our staffing issues. In turn, over the last few months, we've helped cover some Redwood City staffing issues, so it's been a very mutually beneficial relationship. However, dealing with some of these staffing issues, our chiefs began to noodle on, some months ago, a concept of a fully integrated, shared fire department between the City of San Carlos and the City of Redwood City. And we talked about that a little bit internally, and talked some with the City of Redwood City, and I think everybody sort of agreed initially that there was enough interest to have Redwood City go forward and begin to work with our staff to put some numbers together. And Redwood City did that, and they were very successful at it. Having been through this in the past on our side, I can certainly tell you that it's a monumental effort. Redwood City certainly took their task seriously. They put in a ton of work on the proposal that's before you this evening, not only at the management level with the folks that are here, but the finance, HR, and legal staff at the city. We understand how much work went in there, we greatly appreciate it. Redwood City was very communicative with us. Every time they got the ball rolling, they brought to our staff, we worked very collaboratively together with our legal staff, Greg Rubens, Rebecca Mendenhall, our Administrative Services Together Director, to refine these numbers, to share and provide insights into the San Carlos financial picture and the overall fire picture and funding picture here in San Carlos. Which brings us to our meeting tonight. And we have really what we've described as three options for the City Council. And I'd like to detail those, and then we're going to get into a little bit more financial information that'll be presented by Ms. Mendenhall, and then we're going to ask the chiefs to come up and talk about some of the operational issues, and to walk you through the proposal in a little bit more detail. So here are the options that we're going to cover, and we're going to cover these from option three down to option one. So I'm going to start with discussing the Redwood City fire model. Is that correct? Are these matching up here? Continued discussions with the Redwood City on the full fire model, but implemented at a later time. And then we're going to talk about maintaining the hybrid model with the union regarding compensation, and then we're going to talk about the fully outsourcing model. So, let's talk a little bit about option three, which would be to continue the hybrid model. You have a fire department currently, we're currently at 100% staffing in the firefighter, firefighter/paramedic rank. I think we need to step back a little bit and qualify that, and say that there are a number of highly trained, highly qualified firefighters and paramedics in the department who, I believe, likely have other employment options, but have been waiting to see how these discussions go with the City of Redwood City. So I'm not sure it would be completely fair to say that, in the short run, if we were to maintain and go with option three and just maintain our own fire department, that we would have a fully staffed fire department even a month from now. But currently, we do, and that would be an option for the council to stay with that. We have an existing contract for management services with the City of Redwood City. We're very happy with that contract, we're very happy with the services that we've been receiving, we're very happy with the quality of the personnel, the management personnel that Redwood City has been providing us. And the management issues, as it relates to the chiefs and my working relationship in the city manager's office, has been very good. So that would be an option. Should the council elect to do that, you have a labor contract with your local IAFF, International Association of Firefighters Union, which expires later this week, and you would need to go back and begin negotiating that contract, which may or may not result in more compensation into the contract, depending on the council and the firefighters and how those discussions go. And you can continue discussions during that time about a consolidation with Redwood City, about consolidating fire stations, and the future of the fire service. Option two is not unlike option three that I just described for you. It's basically the same status quo, where you keep the firefighters working for the City of San Carlos, you continue the management contract with the City of Redwood City, you continue discussing and looking at ways to create additional savings, create additional sharing relationships, recognizing that you've got, you've got a MOU that's expiring, and you'd be giving direction to your staff on doing that. But likely, based on where we are, as the staff report outlines, relative to the salaries and benefits, and Ms. Mendenhall, I think, will get into this in a little bit more detail, option two would assume that you'd be putting in a fairly significant investment into your fire department, hybrid fire department model next year. And what we wanted to do, and this was one of the things that we struggled with early on, and Redwood City certainly helped us with, is we're trying to create an apples-to-apples comparison, so that when we put up the Redwood City proposal, we weren't necessarily comparing it to the amount of money we're spending on the fire department today, but what we think our model we'd be spending on over the next five years, so that it was a fair comparison, and it didn't artificially look like the Redwood City proposal was actually a lot higher than really we thought it would be over time. And that was our intention in providing that option. So finally, that brings us to the Redwood City proposal, which is the staff-recommended proposal tonight for moving forward. We're asking the City Council to give direction to staff to begin putting together the final contract that we could bring back to the City Council for a fully consolidated, shared fire service model between the cities of San Carlos and Redwood City. That would include fire administration and management, command and operations, truck service, fire prevention, code enforcement, emergency preparedness, and training services. The City of San Carlos would still have a few obligations under the full consolidation model. We would continue to hire and employ one fire prevention officer, our inspector. We would continue to collect fees related to fire prevention and inspection services. We'd retain ownership and maintenance of our two fire stations, and we'd retain ownership and maintenance of all the existing rolling stock, including the fire engines, as well as any major capital equipment located in the fire stations. With that, I'd like to bring Ms. Mendenhall up to talk a little bit about the numbers as they are presented in the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. As Mr. Malpe noted, these are the five-year projections, our current financial outlook for the next five years. We'll go into more detail on these, on the specific revenue and expense line items during our mid-cycle review for the budget, which will be done in May. But here's an updated summary of where we think we're at as of right now. For tonight's discussion, we've separated out the fire expenses from the rest of the fund. Non-fire expenses include community development, parks and recreation, administration, and city governance. In 2013, you'll see that our revenues are projected to be 1.7 higher than our revised budget, and this is primarily due to one-time receipt of funds in the amount of $500,000 related to the settlement agreement with the successor agency and the school districts following the dissolution of the RDA. You'll notice in fiscal year 2015 that that revenue number jumps up, and that's due to the projected one-time fees associated with the development permits related to Wheeler Plaza and the Transit Village. So those are, it's estimated that would happen in 2015, you know, the timing of those developments, pending approval from the council, it could be in a different year. The rest of the revenues are targeted to grow very conservatively, from 2% to 2.5% over the next few years. And the expenses fiscal year 2013 is projected to be 1.8% lower than budgeted, and this is primarily due to savings associated with the vacant positions over the year. As Mr. Malpe said, we are, as relates to the fire department, we are 100% staffed now, but those, that wasn't 100% staffed back in June, so we have significant salary savings in the department. We also have salary savings in the Public Works Department with some vacant positions there. Expenses in 2014 and beyond are forecasted to grow conservatively 2% to 3%. So for fire expenses, like I mentioned before, I separated out the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department obligation from the rest of the fire expenses, as no matter what direction you give us tonight related to the San Carlos Fire Department, we still have the remaining obligations related to the dissolution of the JPA. And those numbers are listed on the separate line item for you. So the resulting net change in fund balance represents a surplus or a deficit in the general fund each year. You'll notice in fiscal year 2013, it's negative, but this is only due to a one-time transfer of $3 million that council authorized at the beginning of this fiscal year to move from our assigned fund balance in the general fund over to the Capital Improvement Fund, Fund 25. So at the end of 2013, the end of June this year, we're projecting an unassigned fund balance of $3.6 million, which all are part of, could also be assigned to capital use or could be assigned to other unfunded liabilities, as we've done in the past. So this also, this scenario would also represent option three, if we were to retain the status quo and leave everything as is right now. So as Mr. Malpe said, the biggest issue that we've had is been, with to recruitment and retention, has been our salary and benefit package. Hiring lateral officers has been very difficult, and the major factor driving the turnover has been our compensation package. Since we began forming the department in May of 2011, the City Council has already made a number of changes to that salary and benefit package. This included adding back salary and benefits from the initial formation of the department, and not cutting the salaries back so far. And most recently, in September of 2012, council approved a 2% salary increase that was retroactive to October 2011, and also established a holiday and floater-in-lee benefit that's roughly equivalent to a 5% increase in salary. The chart shown here reflects all of those changes, and how our positions now match up to the monthly averages in the county. More specific information, including city-by-city comparisons, can be found in your staff report, but this gives you a general idea of where our positions match up to our neighbors in the county. And just for reference, the total compensation numbers include top-step salary, deferred comp, medical, vision, dental, life insurance, and any specialty pays. So any labor negotiations or any direction that you would give the labor negotiators would be discussed in closed session, but at a minimum, if the union were to ask for compensation to move to the average in the county, the anticipated cost to increase our compensation is reflected here. And as Mr. Malpe said, we just use this as kind of an apples-to-apples comparison, just to see that if that's, if that's the direction that the union requested, this would be what it would, it would look like. And our labor attorney is in the audience, so she'll let me know if I've overstepped. Yes, okay. The total cost associated with this option totaled $2.4 million over the next five years. And you'll see, in the third year, in 2016, it would result in a deficit of close to $200,000, and in 2018, or the fifth year, close to $250,000. And again, these numbers are for comparison purposes only. So moving into the recommended option, in comparison, if we were to look at the estimated costs associated with outsourcing or doing the full outsourcing model with Redwood City, it would total $2 million over the next five years, and it would be phased in over these five years. This results in a very small deficit in year three, and a deficit in year five of $400,000. The difference between these two options is only $150,000 in year five. And our, as I mentioned before, our projections are very conservative, and if the economy continues to grow, these projected deficits may not even materialize. In addition, and I believe the fire chiefs will discuss this a little further, if station consolidation becomes a reality, this deficit could be reduced or even possibly eliminated. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the fire chief to discuss more details of the proposal.
Wow, we get double teamed.
Double teamed, yes. You can come up. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Jim Skinner, your fire chief, and deputy chief, Stan Moppen. Tonight, we're going to talk about something that we've been working on for quite a while, and, you know, through it all, we want to maintain focus. And the focus is what the men and women of the San Carlos Fire Department are doing on the street every day, is that the mission of the fire service is to provide that service and keep the community safe. You know, that, I mean, that is what we keep going back to over and over about, how do we build a system that is sustainable and doable for you and us? And how do we get there? Well, this model outlines it, and there's been an awful lot of heavy lifting to get to the point where we are today to present it to you. We tried to make it as attractive as possible, but keeping reality in focus also. I'd like to thank my city manager, Bob Bell, for being so supportive through this and our council, and our, Mr. Malpe, and staff for working with us so closely, and, you know, making sure that we collaborate with each other, and our books are open to each other, and make sure that there's nothing that, you know, we are partners, and we've been partners for over a year and a half now, and we want to continue that. So we want to have a stable and sustainable organization. The stability is something that is very, very critical to us. And again, the mission of the department, of the fire service, is to provide that service. And last summer, when we had to brown out Station 16, that was something that frankly keeps fire chiefs up at night. We never want to do that. That's something that we try to avoid at all costs, and we work through that and try to get to somewhere where we could make it work throughout that, thanks to the men and women of the San Carlos Fire Department for being so helpful in that, and Redwood City also. Those firefighters are cross-staffing to make this work. We all want to get to the point where we can sustain this, because we understand that, you know, it's something that we could do today, we've got to be able to do it 30 years from now. And that's where we have to focus. So we want to, with the model, we want to sustain and maintain the San Carlos brand of the fire department. It took a lot of work to bring the fire department back to life, the San Carlos Fire Department, and it wasn't in existence since 1979 until we brought it back to life, which was a feat in and of itself. I have to tell you, there's no script for trying to start your own fire department in California, and there was no other fire chief that I could call and say, hey, how did you start a fire department? It just didn't exist. But we're here now, we're very proud of the San Carlos Fire Department, and that won't go away, even with this model. We're also looking at the future, and, you know... And, you know, we talk about this consolidation, where could we go from here? And frankly, if, if this model doesn't, doesn't, doesn't come together, the sharing of a fire station will be very, very difficult. Having two different labor groups working in the, under one roof, trying to provide services, very difficult. You know, it probably could be overcome with some labor negotiations and talking with both labor groups, but I really think that's very, very, very difficult to, to achieve. So the consolidation of the fire stations, Station 16 on the Alameda and Station 12 up in Redwood City, that's something that I believe no other, no other cities in the county are even, even thinking about. Because when the, when the cities first put, place their fire stations in their cities, where do they put them? They don't put them on the border, they put them in the center to serve their cities. But we've been in, under a collaborative system, a borderless system, since 1998 in San Mateo County, which is one of, oh, the only, only county that I know of that does that. So we're, we're taking a step forward, and we can both be part of that step, and that's moving a station on the border to serve both cities, both jurisdictions. And if we're not together as a team, that's going to be very difficult to do. There's some significant savings in that, not just the one-time cost of sharing the cost of the station, $2.5 million possibly for each, each city. That's a big number. But continual savings could be anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 a year continually. And that's just on maintenance of the station and running a fire station. And also, you know, with, with the staffing, depending upon how we staff that, that station, we could save more money downstream. But we have to have more, more data to be able to determine what the, the right staffing level would be for that. But I think it's, it's where we need to head. This, this consolidation, this full-service contract is the first step in regionalizing. We've been talking about regionalization since I came into the fire service in 1981, and even before that, we're talking about it. We're, we're right at, at the door where we can make that step and do it. This is very exciting, and hopefully, you know, we want to regionalize. This county, you know, in all honesty, it should be either one or two departments. You know, we could, we could reduce costs to all the cities significantly, and this is just one step towards that. As I've learned over the years, nothing happens overnight, and this is, but we're here, but we're here. And we've been talking about it for 30 years, so, well, maybe the next step will be, hopefully, not that long. So the terms of the, the cost, I mean, we've worked very hard to make sure that it was fair and equitable to everybody. And, and you'll see the cost, they, they accelerate over the next five years with our proposal. But that's because of where we place the firefighters that would move into Redwood City's salary structure. And they would move throughout the steps of, of that salary structure throughout the next five years. And at the sixth year, everybody would be at the top step, so that would plateau or, or flatten out. So the, so you see that about 5% increase over the next five years, that's just because the employees are moving within rank, within steps of the organization. So at, at year six, it'll plateau and it'll flatten out. So we've looked at the preliminary discussions about, you know, stabilization, right? And sustainability is a five-year contract, and we've talked about two, five-year extensions on top of that, that's 15 years. I think that, you know, we talk about, in fire service, we talk about 30-year careers, 30-year, you know, working cycles, and this is just the first step of that. So it's, it's up for discussion, and the, and the terms, the specific terms of the agreement will need to be negotiated further. But I think we've gotten to the point with, with the discussions we've had over the last few months where that won't take much time at all. The city of, Redwood City's council will have to approve this. They've been very supportive all along, they encourage the collaboration, they, they like working with the city of San Carlos. And so with that, we'll field any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief Skinner, deputy chief. And actually, before I get, get to questions, I just want to say that I'd like to extend my thanks for all the effort that you and the other people in Redwood City have put in on this. I, I know it was not an easy road to, to travel. I kept enough on top of it through Mr. Malpe to know just how many potholes there were that, you know, Mr. Walters would have had to fix if they had actually been real roads. But I'm glad we've gotten here tonight to have something to consider, and I really do appreciate all the effort that was put in.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions, and they're mostly operationally focused. You touched on one of the things, which was the brownouts that, that we were forced to go through. And I, I'm, I'm not asking you to predict the future, but I just want to confirm that this model is something that we think would make it less likely that we will be doing things like that.
Well, I, I would say that the likelihood of brownouts that would occur in San Carlos is very, very slim if we have a, a full roster of employees, because that, and that was the problem. The issue was, we didn't have enough fully trained, qualified individuals to fill the slots on, on both engines. The likelihood of a brownout in San Carlos with this, with this model, if we're fully staffed, is very, very slim.
Okay. The next question, I believe probably relates to it, may have this essentially the same answer, which is that before we got to the point of brownouts, we were, we were putting members of the San Carlos Fire Department under quite a bit of personal stress from a workload point of view.
Right.
To cover things. And I take it that this model would alleviate that source of stress as well.
Again, it's the same, same concept if you have, you know, we'll be staff, staffing seven fire stations instead of just the two. So the labor pool to fill vacancies increases by that much. So the stress of, of employees being, being called in on a mandatory basis will diminish greatly. And the, you know, frankly, the, with this model, also the, the, the quality of working life for them will increase. They've, you know, and, and, you know, I think that the people of the San Carlos Fire Department have gone above and beyond making this work. And there's never been a question of, of, of the work that they've done. I get nothing but compliments about the work that they've done out there, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that. Although, you know, with this, with this model, you know, their time off is valuable, and they'll get a lot more of their time off back. So when they do come to work, there'll be, you know, that quality of an employee continually.
Just as an aside, every time I read in some of the local papers about the, you know, the reaction to large amounts of overtime pay for public safety workers, I always ask people a question if they register concern with me, and so, well, do you think they probably would like the time off to spend more time with their family? Most of them that I've talked to, actually, that's the case.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Last question I have is, relates to integrating the staffs. Obviously, assuming, you know, we dot the i's and cross the t's, as I hope we will, and find something that we can all sign our, our names to, you will be inter, will be integrating staffs. Once the integration's over, they will all be Redwood City staff people, so. But in the transition, do you anticipate any significant issues or issues that we would have to address related to things like, you know, seniority, promotional opportunities? Again, what, once the integration's done, that sort of resets, and it, it just goes for normal.
Right. Well, I, you know, I can't guarantee that this is going to be a smooth road with no potholes to take a lead from tonight's council. But just as an example, both of our union leaders are sitting next to each other in the audience, and they've been talking for quite a while about what's right, what's the best thing for all of us. It's not just, you know, the individual, it's, it's the whole. And I'm hopeful that we could, we could get past some of these, these issues. The integration can be a stickler, but if I, you know, I'm confident with their leadership that we can make this happen without too many, too many hiccups.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that, and, you know, I would, I would echo your comments, and not, not to be at all critical of the folks who chose to leave the San Carlos Fire Department for whatever reason, for their reasons, but I personally am very appreciative of the folks that have stuck with us, because you're absolutely right. I mean, even with, you know, brownouts and whatnot, it would have been far worse if we didn't have people who were dedicated to serving the community.
Absolutely. They're very dedicated.
Yes.
And like was mentioned by Mr. Malpe, there, there are several individuals that have offers, and they've decided to stay.
Thank you.
Other questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion then? Let me see if I have any cards on this. I have none.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start. I, I reviewed these numbers, and as you and I know, we were here at the beginning, so to speak, when we almost were apart from Belmont, put it back together, and we're back on the other side, and now we're working with Redwood City the last year and a half. From my perspective, to echo Councilmember Olbert's comments, I have nothing but gratitude for the folks in Redwood City from top to bottom, and the fire department as well as the city staff, and, and also the council, to be open to doing this. I think it's something that, in 1979, I think Belmont and San Carlos are way ahead of the curve, and we lost that curve in the early part of the century, but I think we're trying to get it back with Redwood City, and some of, of course, the other cities you can see are, are doing the same thing. So I think it's an excellent idea. The, the cost that we look at here relative to doing it ourself or not doing it ourself, and, or keeping what we have, and going with Redwood City, I think it's been proven with the, with the police situation, is that you have a much deeper bench, you have a much, many more people to call on if things go, go in a different direction, as opposed to having to staff folks just to allow for vacations and sickness and someone like that. So as one individual here, I support the staff recommendation that we go along with the Redwood City proposal.
Other comments?
I'm too, I'm very pleased that, that this has been a much smoother road than in the past. And as a, as the father of a daughter who dates a, a fireman, who, and loses him a lot to overtime, I'm glad that this goes a long way into solving the overtime issues. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Well, as, it may, may come as a huge shock to my colleagues based on the tone of my questions, I do support this. I, I, I think this is something that is worth doing. It keeps faith with, with folks who stuck it out with us, it keeps faith with our, let me call it, say, first-level partner and go to the next level, sort of a more, a tango as opposed to a foxtrot perhaps. And I'm all in favor of it.
Ms. Clapper?
Yes, I, I join my fellow council members here who have spoken so far in liking and prepared to support the staff recommendation that we use this model, and I like, very appreciative of everything that has been worked on in the past, both from Redwood City and our own city staff, and, and working with the, the past year and a half, and using it as an opportunity to turn it into some good, solid next steps that seem like they will work all the way around. So I am definitely in support and would make a motion.
Okay.
Ready at that point.
I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move the Council of Plurve Resolution Number 2013 dash...
16.
16. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing the city manager to negotiate with the city of Redwood City for fire and emergency services.
Second. Your call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Brings us to, back around to item 9A, which is to introduce an ordinance of the city council, adding chapter 8.28 to the municipal code regarding reusable bag ordinance, effective
Mayor, members of council, Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. And tonight, we're here to talk to you about the potential of a reusable bag ordinance in San Carlos. As many of you are aware, this is an item that first came to the city staff through the city council's strategic plan process at one of your strategic plan retreats in February of 2011, and it has been in your strategic plan like clockwork every six months since. The council initially asked that the staff pursue a regional approach to such an ordinance, very similar to what you did this time last year with the polystyrene footwear ban for restaurants. Initially, there were only five cities, including San Carlos and the county, that were interested. However, as we began working with the county, that quickly expanded over a period of months, and today, all 18 cities that have retailers in San Mateo County are part of this program, as well as six cities in Santa Clara County, and also the county itself. The county very graciously agreed to fund the development of a model ordinance, which is largely based on the program that is in effect in the city of San Jose that started in January of 2012. The county also paid for a regional environmental impact report, which covers all 25 agencies that may adopt this ordinance. As you may recall, when this first came up in 2011, there were concerns both at this city and also in a number of the other cities due to budget concerns about the cost of doing individual EIRs, the cost being estimated at around $55,000. So as we worked with the county, model ordinance was developed. On October 23rd, the final environmental impact report was certified. This was after a series of regional scoping and outreach meetings hosted by the county. I attended a couple of those, including one in Redwood City, which interestingly, there were more San Carlos residents at the Redwood City meeting than there were Redwood City residents. So clearly, there's been a lot of interest among our residents in this concept. On November 6th, the county adopted their model ordinance and then referred it to cities for consideration. Some of the key provisions in the ordinance, again, very similar to what we see in San Jose, it prohibits single-use carryout bags being provided by retailers. It does exempt certain other types of bags, including protective bags for produce and prescriptions, and garment bags that one might find in dry cleaners. It excludes restaurants and charitable 501(c)(3) organizations from the ordinance. Retailers are allowed to sell 40% recycled paper bags, and to do so, they initially would charge 10 cents per bag when the ordinance begins. This would increase in January of 2015 to 25 cents per bag. Customers that have WIC and CalFresh vouchers for food are not charged for the bags under the ordinance, and retailers are required to keep an ordinance of the bags sold for a three-year period. The bags, by the way, have barcodes on them, the 40% recycled bags, which San Jose has found is, makes it easier for the retailers to keep those records. The ordinance also has a fine provision of $100 for the first violation, $200 for the second, and $500 for the third. Where we are today in San Mateo County is that 10 of the 18 cities have now adopted the model ordinance. In addition, the city of Milbrae has its own ordinance, so essentially, 11 of the 18 cities in the county now have an ordinance of this type. Outside of Milbrae, the, the 10 cities in the county are planning to make the ordinance effective on Earth Day, April 22nd, which is two months from now. There are still eight cities, including San Carlos, that are considering adoption of the ordinance in this county. In Santa Clara County, San Jose and Sunnyvale already have city-specific ordinances. In terms of the other cities in the county, two have adopted the San Mateo County model, and four others are considering this model. Two cities in Santa Clara County are considering city-specific ordinances, and three cities in Santa Clara County are not considering ordinances at this time. And this is a table that shows you the 13 agencies in both counties that have adopted the model ordinance. As you can see, a little more than half at this point. We also did some research at the staff level on the results of the ordinances of this type that are now in effect in San Francisco, LA, and San Jose, as well as some research that was provided to us by the California Grocers Association. San Jose has... San Jose has seen, even in the space of one year, some pretty dramatic numbers, an 89% reduction in bag litter in their storm drain systems, 50% to 60% reductions in their creeks and rivers, and a 59% reduction in litter in their neighborhoods and streets. In San Francisco and LA, the numbers vary a bit. San Francisco cites an 18% decrease in bag litter. LA talks about a 95% decrease in plastic bag use in their community, and the Grocers Association indicates that 90% of their customers in San Francisco are now bringing bags after the third year of the ordinance. One of the things that we do in San Carlos in general, and certainly we've done in our green programs, whether it's the mandatory commercial recycling ordinance, or the polystyrene ordinance, or this one, is we do spend a lot of time on outreach. That is one of the reasons that our, this ordinance is coming to you a little later than it did in other cities, where there was either little or no outreach done. We talked to the grocery stores in town, both B&amp;Kinis and Trader Joe's, which have multiple locations and are already implementing this ordinance, and other neighboring communities have indicated they are willing to work with the city if the council moves ahead with such an ordinance here. Lucky Stores has begun to inform their customers in San Carlos and in their other locations that they will be switching away from plastic bags starting in April. We also received, and it's in your packet, a support letter from the California Grocers Association. Interestingly, the CGA began supporting ordinances like the San Jose ordinance since its success, and as a result, both Millbrae and now the county have adopted ordinances model on this model. The CGA's position, by the way, is that they would much prefer to see a model ordinance like this, that covers all retailers that use single-use bags, rather than some of the earlier ordinances that some cities passed where they were primarily focused on grocers and, in some cases, drugstores. In terms of residents, while it has not been unanimous, and I'm sure you all know it's rare that any city proposal is unanimous in terms of support, we began getting indications of support from San Carlos residents even a year ago, when we were working on the other ordinance, namely, the polystyrene foodware ban, where residents would say, "That's great, but when are you going to ban bag, get to the bag ban?" And I know there's been a lot of anxious anticipation, but we're now at that place. And that's been through outreach, our outreach meeting, as well as phone calls and emails, and we have some other quotes from the residents in the staff report. We've also received strong support of this concept from members of San Carlos Green, which are here tonight. Another thing that we did talk to all of the groups about, residents, retailers, and other interested parties, is whether there was any interest in having what I would call a San Carlos-specific ordinance. That is, rather than adopting the county model, we would, you know, have our own environmental document, we might change some of the terms of the model document. I think it's interesting to note that while we got a lot of testimony in favor and some testimony against, I didn't hear from anyone who wanted a San Carlos-specific model, although, again, that's very similar to what we heard with the polystyrene ban. There was also no interest in a custom ordinance there, and that plays out here as well. To expand our reach further, we also put together a web survey for local retailers. We invited over 100 San Carlos retailers to participate. Twenty-two responded. Of those 22, eight did not use these types of bags, but 14 did. Of the 14 who did, we noticed a couple of interesting trends, and one was that of a lot of the question of whether or not there was support or opposition was a function of how many days of bags they had on hand. Of the retailers that had 90 days or less of bags, all seven supported adoption of the ordinance. However, for those who had more than 90 days of bags on hand, five opposed the ordinance, and two said they could go either way, they were sort of neutral. Other trends that we saw in looking at this survey and other comments that staff received is that retailers with multiple locations around the county and around the Bay Area tended to support the ordinance. In part, I suspect that's due to the fact that the ordinance is already in effect or coming into effect at other locations they have, whereas smaller, single-location retailers in San Carlos tended to be either mixed, in terms of being neutral, or, in some cases, being opposed to the ordinance. And that gets to the heart of the staff recommendation, which is, rather than starting a San Carlos ordinance on Earth Day, as the other 11 agencies have done, staff is actually recommending a later start date, namely, July 1, which would allow the retailers to use up their bag stocks. And again, for those of you who remember your action last year on the polystyrene ban, we did something very similar. We did a survey of foodware at restaurants. A number of restaurants indicated they had pretty large stocks, and so we pushed back the date, and essentially, that's what we're recommending to you tonight. Another thing that we got during this process was a lot of questions, particularly from people who weren't necessarily in favor or opposed, and I think also, in some cases, when they got the answer to these questions, it helped inform their final position. One question was about if they sell bags, do they have to collect sales tax, and who gets the money? We found out from the State Board of Equalization that there is no sales tax collected on the sale, and that the funds go to the retailers. We had one resident who is familiar with cloth-based bags that have to be hand-washed versus machine-washed, and during our public outreach meeting was very interested in having the ordinance modified to take out the word "machine washable." And there's been some discussion about the pros and cons of that. As you'll see in a minute, one of the interesting things that we learned along the way is that residents don't tend to wash these bags, whether they're machine washable or not, and there's a question about if you make them harder to wash, if that would discourage that behavior even further. The county and our, in my discussions with them, have indicated that since this ordinance will be reviewed periodically, that this is perhaps a change that could be studied in the future. In terms of which type of bags are exempt, we got several questions about that, and we have informed people that bags such as newspaper bags, produce bags, and dog bags are all exempt from the ordinance. There were some questions about giving away reusable bags, and the way the ordinance is structured is retailers and others can give away these bag, a reusable bag, prior to the start date. However, once the ordinance start, only nonprofits and government agencies can give away the bags at no cost. Another area that we heard some comments about, particularly towards the end of this process, had to do with the question of what is called cross-contamination. In other words, if you reuse the bags multiple times, is there a problem with bacteria? There are a number of studies that the plastics industry that opposes some of these ordinances have commissioned in the United States, Canada, and Australia, and we did review those. One of the more noteworthy studies that was analyzed in the San Jose EIR was a study in Australia, where 25 used bags were collected at random at stores. Nine of those did not have any bacteria signs, even though they'd been reused, but 16 did. The study also revealed that the act of actually taking produce and putting it in a plastic bag actually puts more bacteria on the food than does a dirty reusable bag. They also found that, as I noted earlier, that customers generally do not wash reusable bags, whether they're machine washable or hand washable. And in our discussions with the county, we've talked about potentially adding a discussion about encouraging people to wash the reusable bags as part of the educational outreach. And again, obviously, the point at which you make the ordinance effective, assuming you move ahead with it, will give us more or less time to do some of that. We also included in your council report, and I've also brought up here, a comparison table, which was developed by the City of San Jose and Cupertino, and this is a table showing common kitchen items compared to dirty, reusable bags, and the metric here is something the medical community calls colony-forming units, probably more about bacteria than I ever planned to know. And essentially, what it tells you is that some of the common items in a kitchen, such as a sponge, countertop, cutting board, tabletop, et cetera, are many magnitudes of order higher in terms of their bacteria present than would be even a reusable bag that had been used 15 to 20 times over a period of two years. So in terms of our recommendation tonight, staff is recommending that you introduce an ordinance to amending the city's municipal code, adding Chapter 8.28, which would be the model reusable bag ordinance, and also moving the effective date back from April 22, which was the original county recommendation, to July 1, to allow for the utilization of those bag stocks by local retailers. The staff report also notes that the council could, of course, provide staff with alternate direction, and some of the things that you might want to consider under that heading include changing the effective date, either making it sooner or later than what we're recommending. You could, of course, direct staff to begin working on a city-specific ordinance, but of course, if we did that, we would have to have our own EIR, and we would have to pay for our own outreach and enforcement, and we could talk some more about that, if that's a direction you want to go. Obviously, so far, none of the cities in either county have elected to go that way, except for Millbrae. And finally, the council, of course, could decide not to proceed with an ordinance of this type. That's also within your discretion. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions, or turn it back to you.
Okay. Questions?
Yes. I just, point of clarification, I just want to make sure I interpreted what was in the staff report correctly, because on your third slide, you mentioned about retailers can sell the 40% recycled paper bags, but I thought the retailers could also sell reusable bags. Although I realize it's unlikely that they would sell a reusable bag for 10 cents or 25 cents, I thought that's the way the ordinance was worded, that they could...
Well, essentially, the intent of the ordinance is to require that if the retailer is selling a recycled paper bag, that those would be the minimum charges. I guess, in theory, a retailer could charge more. I know in my discussions with Trader Joe's, for example, they sell quite a range of reusable bags, apparently anywhere from 99 cents to $6.99 a piece. And actually, in my research with other cities and in some of the existing ordinances, apparently, if one buys a reusable bag at an upscale department store, one could pay as much as $75 for a reusable bag, although I'm not sure what exactly that might look like, but there are a number of products out there.
Okay, so those are the minimums, but they can...
That's correct.
They can sell either the paper or the reusable ones?
Correct.
Correct, okay, I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that. And then, you mentioned the possibility of the county revisiting and changing the ordinance.
Yes.
Would, when they do that, will that automatically ripple out to all the other communities that have adopted the ordinance, or will all the cities need to go back and incorporate the new language into their ordinances?
I would imagine we would have to review that, but Dean Peterson from the county is here, and perhaps he could take a shot at that one.
Good evening, council. Dean Peterson, I'm your environmental health director for the county. That question would probably be better to go to city attorney. It depends on how you adopt the ordinance. Generally, an adoption by reference, when the county changes the ordinance, it automatically changes within each city. However, if there's substantial changes to it, we would be contacting the city staff in order to present to the city council, and you always have the option to either accept or not accept that. That's my understanding of how it works.
Well, it would be my advice to have any such changes come back to our council and reintroduce. It's just for the benefit of the public, even if there were a way to automatically have it take place, I think the best policy would be to have reintroduced the ordinance, have it come back for review. And the whole concept of the model ordinance, though, is to be consistent throughout the county, so there'd be strong incentives for the council to adopt those types of changes.
Then I have a follow-up question to that. Given what the EIR covered, what kinds of things in the county ordinance can be changed without having to go back and modify the EIR? What aspects of the ordinance?
You would need to basically take one of the alternatives that was evaluated within the EIR, and we looked at, I believe, four different alternatives. All of them are really adding on to the base core ordinance that we have in front of you. There are small little tweaks. For instance, the Town of Woodside is taking out the requirement to keep records. That would not, that's been determined that you would not have to do an EIR on that. However, I do need to warn your council that unless you adopt pervade, excuse me, unless you adopt the language exactly as written in the county, then we cannot do enforcement or take that on for the city. So for instance, the Town of Woodside will have to be doing their own, granted, they have a small number of retailers, but they've decided that they did not want the county to do it, so they're changing that language. But there's very little in the ordinance that you can change without triggering an EIR, or at least an amendment to the EIR.
Thank you.
Yeah, one other thing I want to mention through the chair that relates to Councilmember Clapper's question, is one of the reasons that the City of Millbrae, for example, is able to do their own custom ordinance, as some of you probably know, they have two full-time staff that are devoted to programs like this, that they fund through their garbage rates, very similar to what the City of San Mateo does. It was my thought, in talking to the county informally during the beginning of this process, that if we were to go down the road of our own ordinance, we could perhaps plug into the contract we have with the county for code enforcement and supplement that. But again, that's the sort of thing, if that's the direction the council wants to go, we can do that. I should also mention, though, that when we did hear from the retailers in favor of the ordinance, particularly those with locations outside the city, as well as the Grocers Association, they were all quite forceful in saying that they certainly hope the city did not do its own ordinance and changed the terms, for whatever that's worth.
I have a follow-up on that point you just made. Do you think they read everything that we have here? Or they read the ordinance? Understood all the ins and outs of it?
Oh, yeah, they're very familiar with the ordinance, and indeed, in most cases, it mirrors the San Jose ordinance. And I think this has to do, and again, I'll let Mr. Peterson jump in if he wants to comment as well, but I think that has to do with the notion of having one set of rules in a common ordinance in as many parts of the Silicon Valley as possible, have uniformity, basically, as opposed to having different little tweaks in every city among the 18.
Is that a fair...
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, getting into enforcement, what does enforcement mean, and what are the costs to the city?
Right now, if this, and I think Mr. Peterson touched on this, very much like the polystyrene ordinance, the offer that the county has made is, if the city adopts the ordinance as proposed, much as you did with the polystyrene ordinance a year ago, the county will be responsible for all outreach and enforcement. There is a point, by the way, though, in enforcement, and Mr. Rubens could probably comment on this as well, much as we learned last year in the polystyrene ordinance, if we get to the place where the fines do not work, and they're still noncompliant, and we have to take someone to court, that's the point at which, obviously, the city attorney would have to intervene, and there would be city costs. But short of that, the county has agreed that they will be responsible for all costs.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Want to add?
That's correct. Our experience with other model ordinances is, where the county is enforcing it, like polystyrene, or with our code enforcement contract, when it comes to enforcing municipal code, that's the city attorney's job, but the administrative enforcement level, that can be delegated to the county.
And I should mention, too, related to enforcement on the earlier ordinance, we've only had a couple of instances where residents have complained about one restaurant or another not yet getting rid of the polystyrene, and I would say that so far, the county's approach has been very gentle and kind. I guess I would say, they contact the restaurant, they go out, there's a lot of hand-holding, and it's very gradual, and my discussion with Mr. Peterson and his crew have indicated that they anticipate a similar type of outreach and enforcement in this ordinance. So again, hopefully, we'll get to the place where there's very little need for enforcement, much as we've seen with the early ordinance.
Okay. One last question.
Sure.
Regarding the survey on which we're basing the delay in the effective date, or 90 days to be able to use up the bags. Now, if the survey took place in December, I'm wondering if the two retailers that said it would take 90 days to use up their, the bags, have perhaps worked down through some of their inventory and really have less than 90 days of bags right now. Do you have a best guess at where that might be?
I don't, but that's a good point. I mean, obviously, the retailers are aware that this is coming as far as the proposal. I have sent them an update indicating that this would be up for the council tonight if they wanted to come to this meeting and attend. And certainly, that's why I assume that all of the multi-site retailers, either the ones I talked to on the phone, or those who responded, all had less than 90 days. Kind of to your point, they're anticipating this coming, and they're... they're anticipating this coming, and they're already exhausting their stocks.
So the two retailers that were listed here with the 90 days, they were not multi-site retailers?
That's correct. The two neutral and the five opposed, the seven that have over 90 days, are all smaller retailers.
Okay.
And actually, if you go to the staff report, it does list exactly who those retailers are.
Okay, thank you.
Next?
Ron? Thank you, Mr. Moore. Very thorough report. Answered a lot of questions I had. Just curious, in the CGA letter, they, obviously, they list all their reasons for supporting, but I wonder if they mention, or if one of their reasons for supporting it is that the grocery industry doesn't have to buy all these plastic bags anymore? Is that a significant cost to them? Has it ever brought up?
My, in my discussions with both grocers and the CGA, they would tell you, in the early parts of my research, that the purchase of plastic bags was significantly cheaper than paper bags, either virgin or recycled paper bags. However, the number-one thing I got from them, both in my discussions and also in watching the Millbrae council discussion of this item, is they were very unhappy, I guess would be a polite way of saying it, in some of the early ordinances of this type, from a couple of years ago, places like the city of Palo Alto, for example, and portions of Southern California, where these ordinances seem to be only covering grocery stores or grocery stores and drugstores. And they felt a little discriminated against, picked upon, you know, whatever term of art you want to use. And so, early on, they came out and said, "It seems that a lot of cities are going to endorse these ordinances, and we've made the pragmatic decision that if you cover everybody, we're going to come out and endorse them." And in fact, in the discussion in front of the city of Millbrae's council, a year, year and a half ago, when they became the first in this county to have such an ordinance, I think it's fair to say that council members in Millbrae were even surprised that the grocers took such a stance, and in particular, supported the San Jose ordinance, which, to my way of thinking at the time, was one of the most expansive ordinances I had seen. And a lot of it, again, came down to this issue of, if you're going to cover all retailers on this type of shopping bag, we're there, we're actually going to support you. But if you're just going to sort of pick on grocery stores or grocery stores and drugstores, then we're going to oppose.
I want to follow up on that question, if I may. How much is a, the paper bags that are being talked about, that have some kind of, what was it, 40%?
Recyclable.
Recyclable material in them? How much do those cost a grocer?
Do you happen to know, Dean, the relative cost?
On average, like anything else, of course, you can buy by bulk, but they average anywhere from about 10 to 25 cents a piece, depending on how much you can buy at one particular time.
Okay.
Thanks. Go ahead. Yeah. Okay. And then, the next one was, has there been any feedback from San Jose, San Francisco businesses on whether or not they've lost business? I do remember one letter to the editor about a very annoyed resident of San Francisco who declared he was going to come to San Mateo County from now on to buy his groceries, because he could buy, he could have plastic bags.
Yeah. Let me, let me offer you a couple of comments. Number one is, as I indicated earlier, most of the multi-location retailers we have, you know, Shell, you know, Bianchini's, others who've contacted the city have indicated that they're supportive, and that includes cases where they already are in cities where these ordinances are in place. We did get one comment from the CVS drugstore in town that indicated that the main concern they had was in the early stages of an ordinance like this. It's been their experience in San Francisco, apparently, that it does tend to slow down the checkout line a little bit, because people maybe forgot to bring a bag, or they asked questions about having to pay for a paper bag. So they said, "There's some initial slowdown, a little customer disappointment slash unhappiness." So those are the, some of the main comments we've heard. But we've also heard, in talking to San Jose, LA, and San Francisco, that once the ordinance has been in place for a period of time, that people get used to it, that they get used to bringing the reusable bags, that these delays that happen in the first month or two, according to the CVS person, tend to go away, and that it's a pretty smooth implementation after that. So I wouldn't be surprised, based on the comments from CVS and the others, that we might experience something similar here in this county and in San Carlos.
So it sounds like an educational process.
I think that's certainly part of it. My understanding is that, for example, in San Jose, and I believe Mr. Peterson and his staff are going to have similar cards and, you know, messaging to say, you know, "Did you bring your bag?" and this sort of thing. And that also will help speed the process, I would think, in terms of the transition.
And my last question is, when this was first coming, when these ordinances were first being proposed, particularly the styrofoam ban, there were some, there was correspondence to the effect that, you know, certain industries or plastic bag companies, companies that make them, manufacturing, were going to either go out of business or have to lay off a significant number of employees. Is it too early to tell what the effect is, has been on those manufacturers? Or do we have some, some data on that?
Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, one of the things that's happened is that a couple of the manufacturers of the plastic shopping bags are actually in Southern California. So I think some focus has been given in some of the discussions in this area about these jobs. People are talking about these firms, where are they located? I know those are the jobs local, or are they out of the area? But I think one of the more interesting things we learned, and I addressed it in my response to the plastic bag maker who had been in the Daily Journal, it turns out that now some of the plastic bag makers are now getting into the reusable bag business, in terms of supplying those as well. And indeed, when I did some research on the person who wrote the op-ed in the Daily Journal, her company has a different division headed by another person besides her, that does, in fact, make reusable bags. And I had facetiously said to one of the Daily Journal reporters, perhaps if the two of them could have coffee, they might realize that their company was sort of in both businesses, namely, one group was making the more traditional thin plastic bags, and the other group, headed by this guy Doug, I think his name was, is now competing, along with a number of other companies, making reusable bags. So clearly, like any other industry, this industry is adapting. And I wouldn't be surprised to see, if it hasn't already happened, other companies who used to make plastic bags exclusively now making the reusable bags. And I did mention in the staff report, by the way, that Trader Joe's indicated, in San Carlos, they sell an awful lot of these, even ahead of this ordinance. And they even suggested to the city that perhaps the city should work with the Chamber and San Carlos Green and other groups in getting into this market, because there's money to be made, as they said.
I could just bring up one last point. One thing you mentioned reminded me of something I saw in Oregon last summer. There was a sign painted in the pavement outside the door of a grocery store, and it said, "Did you remember to bring your reusable bags?" And I'm wondering if we might be able to encourage some of the businesses to, especially maybe CVS, to put signs out and remind people. Because I always get halfway between my car and the store and have to go traipsing back to the car to remember my bags. And
Yeah, well, I...
A big sign out there would be a great help to people like me who don't remember.
You want to comment on that, Dean, but I know that's part of the rollout, is to encourage that sort of thing.
That is definitely one of the expectations we've mentioned to the businesses, is that they put up signs. We're already seeing Safeway, for instance, has those signs up. Save Our Shores in Santa Cruz County, they put up a big mural. So, yeah, we will be encouraging that and helping businesses come up with it, in addition to other types of tagging for the city to put up on your streetscapes also.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mark?
No.
No. Questions?
Makes up for me. I got a lot.
Okay.
So I'm going by mostly the ordinance itself.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to shoot through these questions. The first "whereas" says that the city council finds that single-use plastic shopping bags consistently constitute a substantial portion of the trash and litter found in the streets, streams, creeks, and in the storm drains within the city of San Carlos. And so, what I'm wondering is, where's the specific data to support that claim? And is there any specific data study involving San Carlos to support this declaration?
I believe that the declarations that we used are out of the county environmental document, and I believe that the studies were county-wide. I don't know if...
Most of that data comes from the COSA cleanup day data, in addition to stormwater data that's collected from each individual city.
So there's, you're telling me, where is that, though? I mean, we, we're sitting here, we're supposed to make a decision, and we don't have that data. But we're being asked to make that declaration?
Quite a bit of that information is in the EIR, in the draft EIR.
Was EIR ever brought to the dais of this council?
Actually, the EIR and the draft EIR, the access to those are included in your staff report. We gave you the web addresses, rather than putting the entire documents in the council report.
But it was never, it was never brought to us as a study session, or at any point during this, for us to look at, review, approve, disapprove, comment on, as a council?
It was brought before the county, since they were the lead agency, and we also did include in some of our updates to the council, as well as to the community, information on that process.
But, Mr. Moore, my question was, did we ever, as a council, have the EIR on the dais to study, discuss, make comment on?
No, I don't believe there's any council request to do that.
No, I didn't think so. So we didn't really have access to the data. What's running right now, can we start that from the beginning, please? Thank you, Christine.
Yes.
So, this is, this is just data, not really data, but just walking from my house through Wheeler Plaza to the Plantation Coffee Shop, and then back home again. And this is what I saw. I took pictures of all this stuff as I walked along with my wife. Mostly what you're seeing here is Starbucks cups, beverage containers from Starbucks, other McDonald's, et cetera, cigarette packages and cigarette butts. Those are the two primary things. I did not, now, there are, there are days, I will admit, there are days that, you know, I live close to the CVS, and there's days I've walked from my house over to the plantation, and I'll see a plastic bag or two here or there, cotton and bushes or something like that. But this is predominantly what you see. Another day, my son and I walked from home to City Hall to visit with Mr. Malpe, and when we got here, we told Mr. Malpe, we counted cigarette butts on the way. 154 cigarette butts on the way to City Hall, we counted them on the way back, went a different route, we counted 176 cigarette butts on the way home. So, to the data, you might say, even if it's just a, you know, situation like this, walking through town and taking pictures, what I'm seeing is not plastic bags. What I'm seeing is beverage containers and cigarettes, packages and discarded cigarette butts. So, there, those things right next to the storm drain, great. Couple of pictures. So, thank you. Thank you, Christine. I'd like to note, as a follow-up to my question, somebody mentioned Palo Alto. Palo Alto banned plastic grocery bags in 2009.
Mm-hmm.
And it has no data on the results it had on its three creeks, and they never will, because they, too, relied on a county-wide study instead of a specific study of their city. So they have no idea, you know, a delta, on this date, we passed this ordinance, and today, 2012, here's the difference. They can't, they, there's no way for them to verify that, because they didn't do their own study.
Well, I guess through the chair on Palo Alto, it turns out, actually, the, one of the sustainability managers in Palo Alto is a San Carlos resident, and she did contact me and reached out. She was actually at the Redwood City EIR meeting, and indicated that one of the reasons that they're doing their own ordinance, they're updating their bag ordinance, is, number one, their intent is to expand the scope to be very similar to this ordinance and the one in San Jose, and also because they were sued as part of their original ordinance, they have a separate process. But my understanding, in talking to her, and I unfortunately don't remember her name at the moment, that they are going through a new environmental process. So I haven't tracked that well enough to know, but it could be that in the new ordinance and the new process, they may indeed be looking at some of that additional data. I don't know.
After they do that, they may have a data point. My second question is, compostable plastic bags are available in the market today. You can buy them. I looked up online, I, you know, just typed it in and did a web search, and sure enough, there's plenty of companies that make them. And to the ordinance itself, it says, "We find, the council finds that effective ways to reduce the negative environmental impact of single-use plastic shopping bags is basically to ban them." Why, why wouldn't it be just as effective or more effective to allow people the convenience of a plastic bag, but just require that they be compostable? So that the, I think there's about 8% that end up, you know, where they're not supposed to be. They don't end up in the landfill, they end up as trash on the side of the road, or whatever. So if they're compostable, why not go that route?
So, two of the problems with the compostable, as identified in the ASTM standards, there's a requirement within that standard that they decompose within 180 days in a composting facility. Most of the compostable facilities here, the green waste that you put your, into the green bins and goes often into recology, they have a, usually a holding time of 45 to 60 days. So the composting those bags is not going to happen. Most of the problems with plastic bags, as far as getting into the storm drains, blocking storm drains, getting into equipment, mucking the equipment up, usually caused, is caused within the first 30 days or so of the bag's release. And so, and they do not compost in the natural environment. They need to be in a certified compostable facility.
What about, you saw the slideshow, what about straws, lids, and even cups that are made out of paper, but they're, they're wax-protected and so forth? What's the compostability of those things?
Well, I don't have that data with me. I'm not quite sure. Tonight, we're talking about reusable bags and plastic bags.
Yeah, I know.
Litter is a problem. I think one of the problems with sometimes those photos is you have to realize that when a paper cup gets run over, it stays run over on the ground a lot longer, doesn't blow. Plastic bags tend to blow. They blow across boundaries, they blow into the bay, into the creeks, into the storm drains, clogging up systems. Also, plastic bags are going to clog a storm drain system much harsher and for a longer period of time, as your probably works folks can probably tell you, than a collection of paper cups.
Okay, my third question. Requiring retailers to charge a maximum of 10 cents, or a minimum, excuse me, of 10 cents for reusable bags or paper bags, I'm wondering, when has the government ever before dictated to a retailer that an item leaving their premises must be sold and not given away for free, and that the item must be sold for a minimum price set by the government?
My understanding in the reason for the charge is to discourage the use of the single-use bags and encourage people to bring reusable bags. Although, one thing I will mention of interest in the San Jose study, because they've already had their ordinance up and running for a year, is they have learned that the 10 cents is effective enough in discouraging people from bringing their own bags, that they believe that in another year or two, they may not have to ever get to the 25-cent charge.
But that didn't answer my question. The question, again, was, requiring retailers to charge a minimum of 10 cents for reusable bags, when has the government ever before dictated to a retailer that an item leaving their premises must be sold and not given away for free, and that the item must be sold for a minimum price set by the government?
Well, I'd have, I guess we'd have to research that one.
I think the answer is not ever. Is this, trying to understand this, is this minimum price set by the government to be understood as a fee or a tax? How is this covered by the state constitution, which clearly delineates how taxes and fees are to be handled by the state and/or local governments? For example, Article 13(c) very clearly puts forth how proposed taxes and tax hikes are to be laid before the electorate for either approval or rejection. It also states to what percentage the yes vote must be for passage, in some cases, a simple majority, in other cases, a supermajority.
A couple of comments there. First of all, in terms of legislation like this, obviously, there's the bottle bill, where the state legislature has and does require retailers to collect deposit on bottles. As far as this...
As far as this particular charge, the intent, as I understand it, is to offset the cost of providing the 40% recycled paper bags, that they're, it's roughly equivalent, as I think Mr. Peterson indicated earlier, to what those cost.
However, with the, with the bottle bill, if you'll bear with me, that's a deposit. So if you bring the bottle back, you get your money back. There's no such thing here. So it's not, you're talking, you know, zebras and elephants here, they're different.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Certainly, I think I know where you're going on these questions, and they're certainly valid questions, but couldn't you just say you're against this, and we could move on?
No.
Because you're basically, you're making statements more than you're asking questions.
No, I'm asking a question.
Well, okay. Well, can I answer them? Can I answer the questions?
What I'm trying to understand here is, when you have government dictating something, it either looks, it's either a fee or a tax, and when it's a fee or a tax, there's a process constitutionally by which that fee or tax can be set. In this case, we just simply have the government saying, this is going to be the charge, you'll pay it, and where you weren't paying it before, it's, it doesn't even fall under any of these things that are in the state constitution, so...
But you have the option to not pay it.
No, you don't.
Yes, you don't have to take a bag from a store.
Well, you're, yeah, right, but you're sort of forcing behavior or forcing someone to pay essentially a fine. From where we stand today to where we'll stand after this passes, if it passes, you're asking people to either forget about the convenience that you did have, and go through the effort of buying your own reusable bags, which you didn't have to do before, and there's a cost there to the consumer, or every time you go to the store, pay 10 cents, and next year, pay 25 cents. So, I'm a little troubled by it, because it, you know, it's out of bounds with anything that's in the state constitution.
Mr. Moran, can I respond?
Could I make a suggestion that we don't respond to this, so we can move along? Mr. Collins, please?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Because I think we just need to get, get over this, and ask the questions, and we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Ms. Clapper.
I really appreciate your respect for my asking these questions.
Well, you're not, but...
No, I am asking questions.
All right, well, fine, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
If no one wants to answer them, that's up to them.
Well, that's another issue, but I don't think we need to, we don't need to interrupt you, is my point.
Right. Question four's already been answered. The county's EIR, I was asking if it was ever before the council, the answer's no, we've never seen it. It says here in one of the whereases, "The use of single-use carryout bags by consumers at retail establishments is detrimental to the environment, public health, and welfare." So, my question is, in San Carlos, is this truly the most effective way to clean up our environment, or are other forms of litter more of the problem and need addressing? Again, this gets back to, we have no data.
Part of the pollution prevention program within San Mateo County is to look at all forms of litter. There are certain things that we can do locally, there are certain things that have to be done statewide, there are certain things that need to be done nationwide. Packaging, for instance, one city wanted us to look at six-pack rings. Very difficult for a local agency to regulate the use of six-pack rings, that's something that has to be done at a global level with manufacturing. So absolutely, we're concerned about cigarette butts, we're concerned about, any single-use item is something that we feel, in California and San Mateo County, really should be phased out. We would like to encourage people to bring their reusable mugs into their favorite coffee store. But those are things that have to be done on a piece-by-piece effort. This was an effort to look at reusable bags, and that's where we are tonight.
I guess I'm wondering why. I've got an article here, "Deluge of Garbage Polluting San Francisco." 49% is plastic, but it's made up of candy wrappers, chip bags, lids, and straws, 8% separate and apart from the 49%, 8% plastic grocery bags. So we're, to me, we're attacking the wrong thing, but, you know, that's why I asked the question. Number six. Says the manufacture and distribution of single-use carryout bags requires utilization of natural resources and results in the, in the generation of greenhouse gas emissions. So, the manufacture and the distribution is supposed to be more than reusable bags? I've read articles where the manufacturer of the reusable bags actually uses more energy, and I'm wondering, what about the offset effect of people now buying plastic garbage bags in lieu of the plastic grocery bags they, many, many people use to line their garbage cans?
All of that is...
See what I'm saying? These are being called single-use, but for a lot of people, they're not single-use. They line their garbage bags with them, and, you know...
That's two uses of a petroleum product that is unrenewable. We feel that that's as well...
But you're still going, you have a...
Of the other impacts, as far as water use for manufacturing of reusable bags, transportation of those bags is addressed in the EIR, and it was determined by the EIR that there is not a significant impact based on the use of reusable bags or this ordinance.
But Pete, the point is, the question I had was, the offset of, you take the plastic bag away from folks who get them in the grocery store, now they're going to have to go to the store and buy plastic bags to line their garbage cans with.
Why?
So they still have...
Why?
Well, one reason why is because...
In my household, in my household, and I live in San Mateo County someplace that also does green waste recycling, as it is in San Carlos, my garbage waste is completely dry. I do not need a plastic bag. I do what my grandma taught me to do, and that is to wrap my garbage cans in newspaper. I do not use plastic in my house, don't need it. We started using plastic bags to wrap our garbage in the 70s.
Well, you're going to have to teach the whole county and city of San Carlos, then.
I'd be happy to.
But my point is, my question was, was this taken into account? Because many people are not going to do what you do, many people are going to take the simplest route and go to the grocery store or wherever, and buy plastic bags that are available for liners in garbage cans, that they put under their sink or wherever around their house.
And that's a, that's a personal choice that they're going to make.
It is, and that's, my question is, did the EIR take into account the offset?
They did not take a look at people then buying plastic to wrap their garbage cans with. What they're looking at is the reduction of plastic bags in the environment and the reduction of plastic that's coming into the county and out of the county.
So they didn't look at it?
It's fairly, it's insignificant.
We don't know that. If they didn't look at it, they didn't look at it. So you can't stand there and say, it's insignificant, you have no idea.
There would certainly be no increase. There would only be a decrease.
There would be no positive effect to the environment, if you still have a...
There would only be a decrease in that use.
All right. So the manufacture and distribution of so-called single-use bags, using up natural resources and generating greenhouse gases more than reusable bags, you're saying that the EIR made the point that the reusable bags use less energy and less water and less everything to produce versus the...
Correct.
One-time use?
Correct. We also took a look at the paper bags, and that's the reason there's a charge on the paper bags. We don't want to preferendiate paper bags, because not only the production of paper bags, but once those paper bags are either put into a composting facility or into a recycling or into the garbage, creates greenhouse gases. So again, we feel there is no difference between a plastic bag and a paper bag, we feel reusable in San Mateo County is the way to go, and that's why our recommendation is for the reusable bag ordinances.
Are you familiar with the UK Environmental Agency study on this?
Yes, I am.
Where they said that the plastic grocery bags is 1/4 that of paper bags and 1/73 of a reusable cotton bag?
That study was in the UK many years ago, our studies are done in the US, they're done locally.
Good, I see, okay.
Our studies are done for San Mateo County and those jurisdictions, is not done by the UK.
Number seven. Says here in the ordinance, "Single-use carryout bags provided by retail establishments impose unseen costs on consumers, local governments, the state, and taxpayers, and constitute a public nuisance." My question is, to what degree is that true? What percentage? Isn't that true of all litter? And shouldn't we be focused on the sources of litter that are the greater percentage of the problem?
Plastic bags cause a much more expense to cities and to, for instance, have you taken a tour of the recology plant down in San Carlos?
Haven't, don't plan to.
Well, if you did, they could explain to you how plastic bags get into their machinery, continually clog up these multimillion-dollar machinery, they have to shut them down for hours at a time, send people in to unclog those. Storm drains, a lot of flooding is caused because this material's put into storm drains, they make it into storm drains, you cause flooding. Your public works department spends a lot of time pulling paper, or, I'm sorry, plastic bags out of the garbage collectors and the trash collectors within the cities.
Our guys do?
Most public works departments, I know, they have trash, trash collection and trash interceptors within a lot of the storm drains in the major creeks, and those get clogged up with plastic bags.
And leaves and everything else, I suppose. Number eight. "We find and declare that we have a substantial interest in protecting our residents and the environment." My question is, what is the cost-benefit analysis? What about illness and deaths related to reusable bags carrying viruses that cause food-related illnesses and deaths? And I, by the way, I noticed your, the studies you cited said there's no real problem, but I looked at a couple of different studies, University of Pennsylvania and some others, where they cited illnesses, and there was, I have an article here, Oregon, in the, in the state of Oregon, where some soccer team kids got sick from eating cookies out of a, you know, that were in a reusable bag. So, there is a health issue.
I would be happy to take the council's time to address both of those, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Let's start with the Oregon study. The Oregon, it was a group of, I believe, Girl Scouts or a soccer team or something, they were in a hotel room. The individual that was assigned to that hotel room had been sick for a couple of days with norovirus. The rest of the team came into the room, ate cookies that happened to be in a reusable bag. If that bag were a plastic bag, a garbage can, anything, those individuals would have been sick. That's common epidemiology. The study from the University of Pennsylvania, I believe that's the one you're referring to, is a Click &amp; Wright, or Wright study?
It was University of Pennsylvania Law School, Wheaton, and University of Pennsylvania, Department of Economics, in the School of Arts and Sciences.
Right, Click, the Click &amp; Wright study. Basically, that's classified as an ecological study, and that's, in epidemiological terms, that basically says that you're doing a study that says, if factor A increases in a location, and then factor B increases in the same location, therefore, factor A causes factor B. Now, in looking at that, it's fairly easy to come up with lots of examples to show that why this is called an ecological fallacy. You cannot simply say, based on their study, that because reusable bags in San Francisco, actually, the ordinance in San Francisco in 2007 did not really require reusable bags, it simply said you could not give away plastic bags. Those plastic bags were then quickly substituted with either thicker plastic bags or paper bags at no charge. There was really no major increase in reusable bags back then. However, getting back to the study, the flaw of that study is that the persons that used reusable bags frequently may not have been the same people that were diagnosed with those ER instances. So you can't make any conclusions from this study. We had a number of epidemiologists look at it, the health officers from both San Mateo County and San Francisco have taken a look at that study, and have a long list of reasons why that is not a valid study. It has not gone through peer review, it has not been published, it is a couple of lawyers at a law school writing this particular study, they are not epidemiologists. There is no valid validity to that study. If you were concerned that reusable bags and the use of reusable bags were a public health concern, I would not be here in front of you. It is not a public health concern. Our health officers come out and made that statement. You have countries around the world that have not, that have required reusable bags for many, many years. We do not see an increase of disease in those countries, we do not see an increase in LA, we have not seen an increase in San Francisco, in San Jose, or any other area that is, that is reusing, using reusable bags and eliminating plastic bags.
I'm curious, the final, it says that the, it stated that the, per the final EIR, that there is no substantial evidence that the project as proposed will have a significant effect on the environment. That seems incongruous with telling us that it will have a significant impact on the environment. How do we, how do we agree with both of those?
The overall project does not have a significant impact. There are several aspects to the EIR that there are beneficial impacts by adopting this, by adopting this ordinance and implementing it, but there is nothing within the EIR that shows that there is a significant detriment to the environment by, by implementing this ordinance.
So there are particulars that do have, but generally, it does not have, is that what you're saying?
The overall, there is no significant impact to the environment, but there are certain aspects that have benefits to the environment by implementing this.
All right. Inside the ordinance itself, I'm looking inside of it now, part E appears to, to me, I, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but part E talks about a retail establishment may provide one or more recycled bags at no cost to any of the following individuals and customers and so forth, and it gives a list there. And I'm curious about that versus our state constitution that says an ordinance or a law in the state can't grant privileges or immunities to some individuals that it doesn't offer to others.
The ordinance has written that the retailer establishment may provide at no cost, does not require the retailer to not charge them, but it is, does give the retailer the option.
But it's still, it's still the law that's allowing the immunity to take place?
I'm not a practicing lawyer, I cannot answer that question.
Well, I, I mean, I'll comment on that, that seems to be an exception to the requirement, and there's a, there's an ascertainable standard to it. I think that's the, what the county was looking at, that it's, if you qualify for these government programs, you can identify the individuals, and it's akin to other discounts or other things that apply to people in certain circumstances.
Is it, is it applicable on the flip side of saying, if you're a certain, if you're a government agency or a nonprofit, you can go ahead and sell these things, but if you're not, you can't?
Well, I think that, that goes into the category of the police power that the, that you have as a council and that the County Board of Supervisors utilized in passing the ordinance. It's basically a, they've identified a health and safety issue, and I understand that you may differ with some of the conclusions, but that's the issue that they've identified, the use of plastic bags, and so they've come up with a statutory scheme to deal with that perceived problem, and utilizing their, the police power, they've come up with a statutory scheme that is intended to address that concern. As far as the city of San Carlos is concerned, the idea here and the way, why it's being presented is, there's an opportunity for the council to adopt this model ordinance, which provides a methodology for enforcement, as well as addressing this, the same concern that is, has been identified. So, the, I, when I look at this, at this law, I see give and take utilizing the police power, I don't necessarily see constitutional issues with respect to providing an exemption from the regulation, especially since it's not a mandatory exemption, it's not using the word "shall."
But it does on the side of whether or not you can give these bags away.
It, it does regulate, you can't... It, it does regulate, you can't give the bags away, that's, that's very explicit in it, that the bags, reusable, we ban the single-use bags by this ordinance, and we require the use of reusable bags, and then it sets the minimum charge that the retailer will, must utilize. And it's, and I think the intent there, and Mr. Peterson could correct me, I think the intent is to encourage people to bring their own bags with them rather than purchase the bags, that's why.
Sure, I understand that part, I just never seen it done before, and it, it seems to fall into some odd category that, you know, it's not a tax, it's not a fee, but it looks like one. So, so now I'm looking at the record-keeping and inspection part, and I'm wondering, why is it even necessary, first off, and I'll let you address that, and then I got another question related to that?
Two, it's really twofold. The first, speaking on the side of my brain for recycling and trash reduction, is to be able to take a look at something at the end of the year and identify that we have seen a reduction in the use of either paper bags or plastic bags, we can put that into the matrix. The other side of my brain is the regulatory side of it, and it really is as an enforcement tool. For instance, if a store's inventory says that they purchased from a vendor 10 paper bags, and they're telling us that they sold three paper bags, they would have a record showing that they bought 10, sold three. So, it's a record-keeping in order, as an enforcement aspect to it. But we'll likely be using it more for the times when we have a recalcitrant business and need something more within the ordinance, but we will also be using it to help us identify what is the reduction of bags that are being used out there. The grocery associations indicated they will assist us in collecting that information from the larger stores, and we feel with that we'll be able to fairly easily take a look and extrapolate that information on a county-wide basis.
So, Mr. Rubens, because you're a business, the state constitution on, you know, rights and privileges on your own records and papers and, you know, not needing, not, not having the government coming and inspecting that kind of stuff unless they have a warrant or something, that's different when you're in business? Or the, you know, the US Constitution is similar with the, was it the Sixth Amendment?
Well, unreasonable searches and seizures.
Right.
Is the Fourth Amendment, and.
Sorry, the Fourth Amendment.
And the, the issue is, I think, again, it's part of, of, part of the statutory scheme to develop a method to, to be able to enforce the provision of these bags, because the stores, and I'm diverting a little bit just from, anecdotally, but the stores are giving, are doing a lot of business, and there's lots of bags, so there, there has to be a way to, for the enforcing agency to be able to determine the number of bags that were sold and verify the, the information that's being provided by the retailers. I don't know, I haven't researched the issue of whether or not there's any cases that talk about.
But it's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is it sounds to me like, the minute you go in business, if I'm a single sole proprietor, owner of some kind of store, now, my record-keeping is open to the government without a warrant because of some ordinance like this?
Well, there are ordinances, you know, in the business world where this applies, and it's largely payroll taxes and things of that nature, where what's, I've had private clients have, be audited by the EDD, and it's not a subpoena process, it's turn it over. So, there, there are other examples of ways that, through the, through taxing or other enforcement mechanisms, that agencies are required, I mean, businesses are required to keep records.
So, it appears that the whole finding process, it's as though the director of the Environmental Health Division is the police officer, the judge, and the jury. Is that right?
It's been a while since I've read the enforcement aspect of it, it's usually not the most important part of the ordinance for me, but it is something that we always put in. And, correct, the decision is made at the director's level, and it is not appealable, my understanding is not appealable to either the licensing board or to the board of supervisors, that is correct.
See, I find that, I don't know, I find that interesting, because at least with, like, for instance, with something like the liquor laws, which is in the state constitution under Article 20, at least there you've got a board that's a three-member board appointed by the governor and approved by the legislature. In this case, it's just one person, and that, I'm, I'm wondering about that, you know, let's say I'm a grocer, and I give away a bag to a person, there was these allowances for certain people I can give the bags away to. So, I give that away, and one of my customers sees me do that, and they call you on the phone and say, you know, "Grocott's Grocery Store is giving away paper bags for free." Now, we have a hearing, I go to your office, I guess, I don't know where the hearing takes place.
That's not the process.
What's the process?
The process is, my outreach team would go out to you, they would talk to you, they would find out why you did that, tell you you're not supposed to do it. If you did it again, you'd likely get a letter from us saying, "Really, Mr. Grocott, you're really not allowed to do this?"
But how do you find out about it to begin with?
We're sending letters to retailers, they're sending placardings out, we're visiting stores.
No, no, no. How, how is a complaint generated such that you would even start sending a letter?
Complaints can come to us from the public, they can come from other businesses. Typically with these types of ordinances, the number one complaints we get are from other businesses, because they see an unfair playing field out there, and they want to make sure everybody is playing fairly. But we would take complaints from anybody that would decide to complain, we would investigate, we would work with them. It's very similar to the polystyrene ordinance that we are implementing throughout San Mateo County. We have yet to, we've had it in place now for well over a year, in some cities, less than a year. We haven't even come close to finding them, it is not the intent of the division to find. However, we do have, as all ordinances have, the ability to do it if we get to that point.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think I can clarify the enforcement, just taking another look at the ordinance. These are administrative fines, they're not criminal fines, it's not, you're not going to go through the court system, and there, there is an, the, the appeal, there is an appeal and a right to a hearing for the administrative fine.
He just said there isn't, and when I read it, it said there isn't.
Well, there's a hear, it says there's a hearing that's, and you can have a hearing, it's not his decision as the director of environmental health is not appealable, but there is a right to a hearing contained in.
Where's that?
It's in the section 4.114060C. You have to take, request a hearing within 10 days.
Right, but it says, the decision of the director, the last sentence says, "The decision of the director shall be based upon a finding that the above-listed ground for contest has been met and shall be a final administrative order with no administrative right of appeal."
That's right, there's no appeal beyond.
Once he makes his decision, that's it. You have no right to appeal, you have no right to trial by jury or anything like that.
Well, that's because there's no jeopardy on this, there's no way to get put in jail or have any other further fines.
No, but there's a $100 fine, $200 fine, $500 fine, the US Constitution says that if it's a matter of $20 or more, you have right to a jury.
Well, only if you have jeopardy, in other words, you can go to jail, you can't go to jail for this.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, that's all my questions.
Can we hear from the public?
Yep. Suzanne Emerson, Bonnie McClure, Pat Potter, at order.
Good evening, Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos for San Carlos Green. Pat Potter had to leave due to the late hour. I'm happy to see that this ordinance is being brought before the city council for consideration. San Carlos Green does strongly support adoption of this ordinance. We're very happy that it's going to be consistent with what's going on elsewhere in the county and with nearby jurisdictions. We like the idea of doing something that, that has a lot of predictability and isn't piecemeal, one location and another. We're very excited about trying to remove litter of, of many different sorts and hope this is one step in that direction. Thank you very much.
I have seen this kind of litter. I've cleaned it up over on the Pacific Ocean beaches, I've cleaned it up out in the San Francisco Bay beaches, I've cleaned it up on Cortoleras Creek. Just ask practically any Sierra Clubber that's gone out on any of these cleanup tasks. You see, you see paper, you see plastic, you see everything. I grant you, this isn't going to solve it all, it's going to solve one part of it. And right now, that's what we've got. And it's regional, I think it's a great ordinance, and I certainly encourage you to endorse it. Thank you.
And Pat Potter's left, okay, so, all right, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to introduce the ordinance, if I may.
You may.
I'd like to introduce, I believe the language I use, Mr. Rubens, is I introduce ordinance number.
1455.
1455, ordinance of the city of San Carlos, adding chapter 8.28 to the municipal code, to the municipal, municipal code, reusable bag ordinance.
Second.
So, now, any discussion? Well, hearing none, I'm going to make a few points here. Bear with me, please. I'm going to vote no on this, I think you guys could tell that, I'm not very happy about this ban. Number one, I believe it is unclean. I would give you just the example of one of the shows I watch, Food Network, Restaurant Impossible. The fellow, Robert Irvine, goes through restaurants that are failing and so forth, and works with their staff and brings them around to being a successful restaurant. One of the programs I watched, he had a hidden camera watching the staff, and he got all over the, the waitstaff for taking the, you know, hey, they come to your table and they do the pepper, right? And the waitstaff was doing this with the pepper, putting it under their arm. And he, I, he berated these, these waitstaff members for doing that because of the bacteria that is under your arm, even though, obviously, the waitstaff has clothes on and shirt, you know, a shirt or whatever. But it, it rises to that level of concern with a restaurant, and I believe these reusable bags, obviously, it's, it was even admitted with Mr. Moore's presentation, people don't wash them, they end up in the trunk of your car with your running shoes, or in your kitchen someplace where, you know, maybe the broom goes, or whatever. The point is, there's no real control, and what I like about the current system we have of people getting bags from the grocery store, be they plastic or paper, is, you know, that that bag pretty much came from the manufacturer to the store and has never seen the sight of any bacteria, whereas reusable bags, you have no idea. And you're sharing now your food and your groceries with the practices of people, you have no idea what their habits are. And I don't feel like it's in the public's benefit of safety to be pushing folks towards reusable bags because of that one aspect of it. Number two, I don't think it's really necessary. I think simply requiring by a certain date that all plastic bags be biodegradable, you know, they're available, you can get them, and that would, that would be a big step forward in, in the process. I understand what the fellow from the county was talking about, that, you know, it's got to be in a actual garbage dump to biodegrade, but things are going to biodegrade over time, and even if it's not in within the, the standards of the, I think he referenced ASHA standards, eventually it will biodegrade, just like all the other trash that's out there, and so I don't think that, that it's necessary. In San Carlos, I really don't believe it's the most pressing. And, like I said, I cited a, an article I have that said that the greatest percentage of plastic is actually lids to beverage containers, straws, candy wrappers, other, other types of plastic that is, that is the bigger part of the problem. So, I think we're, we're focusing on the wrong thing, and I think the only reason we are focusing on it is because it's the politically popular thing to do, and there's this push going on, and, and there's, you know, this countywide deal, and that's why we're doing it. I think San Carlos would be better off looking at what, what's the trash in San Carlos, I've said that from the very beginning. And I do believe this is, it's simply political, that's why they picked Earth Day for many of these cities to have the ordinance adopted, and I, for one, am not about doing things for political reasons, I would, I do them for commonsensical reasons, reasons to have data that I can see and understand and read, and I don't see that in this case.
I do have a discussion point.
All right.
That can add that. I would, I would like to see our, the ordinance move the date up. I, I feel that it would be appropriate to do it at the same time as other, the other cities, and do it in April. I think that, given what Mr. Moore was telling us about the results of the survey and the number of bags that people had, that we don't need to delay it to July. And my, while I'm supporting the reusable bag ordinance, it does not diminish my interest or support in looking at how we contend with all of our litter, other litter problems. But I think this is a, is an excellent first step in setting an example for people of all ages in our community in terms of how we handle the products we come in contact with and how we dispose of them, that may hopefully carry over to other items that tend to litter, our streets and the bushes and the side of the freeway and everywhere else. Thank you.
Through the chair, she, would you like to make a motion on that, because otherwise it's not going to go.
Yes, is that the, is that the appropriate?
Unless you want to adjust.
Next step?
Yeah.
I'm always a little confused when we have, what I'm used to is offering a friendly amendment to the event.
Yeah, well, you can, if you want to, she's, the friendly amendment's to your.
Actually.
I don't mean Robert's Rules of Order here, but we got to.
Well, that's, that's your job, as vice president.
Yeah, Robert.
And there's Robert, that's right. Councilmember Clapper, I think you make a, a number of good points about moving it up. I will tell you that purely from my own personal point of view, I'm a little hesitant to do that, simply because, even though it's clearly spelled out here that the council has the ability to adjust this, there may be some level of expectation in the community now that, that we're going to do it on July 1st, and I, I would not wish to aggravate somebody's stock management issues to change things. But I, I understand what you're saying, and I think if it weren't for that issue and the potential fiscal thing, I would support it, but for me, I would rather just adopt the ordinance as it's written and implement it as, as per schedule. I don't know how, what anybody else feels.
I agree.
I concur with the maker of the motion.
Okay, thank, thank you just for considering it.
Sure.
I think we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Alpert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
No.
Item 9B is an introduction of an ordinance amending and re- Item 9B is an introduction of an ordinance amending and replacing Chapter 2.28 of the San Carlos Municipal Code regarding emergency organization and preparedness.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As part of the program I've undertaken this year to update portions of our municipal code, this is one of those ordinances. In reviewing the municipal code, I noticed that this ordinance was enacted in 19, the original 2.28 was enacted in 1951 and has not been amended since 1951. And there've been, there've been many changes, primarily to the wording and the names of the agencies and persons in authority at the state and the title of the local officials that required some updating. I've had some experience, as many of you know, with a disaster in another city that was representing. And the, I think it's important to have an ordinance that Cal EMA and the federal government and other agencies will recognize as being a current and updated ordinance. I think it'll ease, if we ever have such a disaster, it'll ease the process by which we couldn't respond to that disaster, determine whether or not our local resources are sufficient to handle it. It also includes a prompt, if you will, that we haven't, since I've been the city attorney, I'm not aware that our disaster council has ever met to plan or organize for the potential future disaster. And I think this, passing this ordinance, or at least introducing it tonight and then passing it at a future meeting, will prompt a meeting of the disaster council and have us take a look, dust off, if you will, our plans and make sure that those plans are appropriate and suitable in the event we suffer from an earthquake or fire or other disaster in San Carlos.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rubens. Any questions for Mr. Rubens?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Hearing none, I'll be happy to hear a motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that the city adopt an ordinance amending and replacing, do I need an ordinance number?
Yes. Introduce 1456.
Also introduce.
Oh, introduce.
1456.
1456. I'll start over again. Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce ordinance number 1456, an ordinance amending and replacing San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 2.28- Emergency Organization and Preparedness.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Alpert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Not having heard the presentation, I'll abstain.
I guess that brings us to item, let's see, where are we? We did 9D. Okay, last item. Besides close, or consent calendar items. Okay. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to take actions necessary to effectuate the rights of the city under that certain long-term option to purchase agreement pertaining to the San Carlos Elms. Mr. Swicki.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Mark Swicki, economic development and housing manager. In 1994, the city and the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency entered into a complex set of transactions designed to facilitate the financing and development of an assisted living facility for the elderly, which we know as the San Carlos Elms. A nonprofit public benefit corporation named the San Carlos Development Corporation, which I'll refer to as SCDC, was created for the purpose of developing, owning, and operating the Elms project. The RDA had acquired the land and then sold the land to SCDC for development. The RDA paid $2.8 million for the land and then sold it to SCDC for $2.583 million. To finance the development, the city sold mortgage revenue bonds, and the proceeds were loaned to the SCDC through an FHA insured mortgage. Additional funding for land acquisition and development was loaned by the RDA and evidenced by a residual receipts note. A residual receipts note operates as a silent second mortgage. Principal and interest are due at maturity of the FHA insured loan. However, HUD allows prepayment of principal and interest from residual funds after payment of the FHA mortgage payments and any required reserve deposits. To ensure the long-term benefit of the San Carlos Elms to the city, and given the significant investments made by the city and the RDA, the SCDC gave the RDA an option to purchase the San Carlos Elms for a price equal to the outstanding FHA insured mortgage and the residual receipts note's balances. The current outstanding principal balance on the FHA insured mortgage is approximately $15.4 million, and the current outstanding principal balance of the residual receipts note is $3.8 million. The SCDC had been making regular monthly interest payments of $30,875 per month on the residual receipts note to the RDA through December of 2011, but has not made any payments since. Through February 2013, the accrued and unpaid interest totals another $432,250. The SCDC has questioned the ongoing validity of the residual receipts notes and the rights of the city of San Carlos as the successor to the San Carlos RDA to receive payments. Staff and legal counsel have communicated that dissolution of the RDA should not, should have no effect on the rights and obligations of the parties to the residual receipts note, and most recently, the city provided SCDC with an indemnity against any actions by HUD should they make payments on the note. We are aware that SCDC has over $5.4 million on deposit with the lender in a residual receipts account. In order to ensure full payment of the residual receipts note and to protect and preserve the San Carlos Elms as an asset for the long-term benefit of the community, staff is recommending that the city council take action to effectuate the city's rights, and I will turn it to City Manager Malby to expand on that.
Thank you, Mr. Swicki. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just talking a little bit in terms of, excuse me, the recommendation before you this evening. It would provide council direction to the city manager to, I'm sorry, I'm fighting a cold, and over the course of the day I'm starting to lose my voice. Over the, it would allow the city council to give direction to myself, the city manager, to act on your behalf in terms of exploring options for how to resolve the current issue between the city and the San Carlos Development Corporation. There are several things identified in here, and they're not options that we're asking the council to weigh in on one or the other. They're actually all three things. And I'd like to make it very clear that my preferred option in terms of resolving this is to continue our relationship with the San Carlos Development Corporation, to find a way to work out these differences, as I know you've all heard me say many times and you've heard others say as well, who know even better than I, what a complicated, complex land use deal the Elms project is. It is very, very complex. And in anything complex, there's room for lots of different interpretation, misunderstandings, and differing points of view. And so I think what we have here is a very complicated project that, over time, has evolved in a complex and complicated world, complicated even further this last year by the dissolution of the RDA, and possibly some differing future points of view in terms of what the vision is for the Elms project. I'd like to make it crystal clear that the city, in considering these options, at no point in time, has ever considered or envisioned any different operating model for the Elms. In other words, the folks that live at the Elms, the employees that work at the Elms have nothing to fear from the city in terms of exploring these options. We think that it's a fantastic organization. We certainly commend the San Carlos Development Corporation and its board for all its hard work over the years in terms of operating and enhancing the Elms from even what it was originally envisioned as. It's an outstanding, top-notch facility, and I'm sure that the San Carlos Development Corporation would join alongside me in saying that it's in all our best interests and indeed in all our hearts to maintain the San Carlos Elms as exactly that, a top-notch facility. That said, the San Carlos Elms represents a significant financial investment of the taxpayers of San Carlos who envisioned and supported this project and has ultimately the responsibility of the city of San Carlos and its council to protect and maintain that investment. And in doing so, the original council, who helped put together this deal, put certain tools into the agreements that would allow the city council in the future to consider situations just like this and weigh its options in terms of how to move forward with the ownership and control of the Elms project. Again, I believe strongly that moving forward with an option to execute a purchase of the Elms should be seen only as a last resort. I believe that there is plenty of common ground to effectuate a solution that would work for the benefit of the San Carlos Development Corporation and the city of San Carlos. However, that's only my point of view, and we need to plan for and prepare for all contingencies as we move through there. In a recent meeting I had with the board a couple of weeks ago, there were comments made that maybe if the city's point of view is X, then maybe we should execute our option. I don't, I still don't necessarily believe that that's the right path, but I do believe that should we go down that path, that the most successful way for the benefit of the Elms itself and the people that live there and work there and call that place home would be for us to work with the San Carlos Development Corporation to effectuate a very smooth transition of ownership if we go down that road. Again, I believe that's a last resort. My plan, really regardless of the action, unless you're going to direct me otherwise tonight, in moving forward is to meet directly, continue to meet directly with the San Carlos Development Corporation to try to explain the city's point of view in terms of where we have agreement and where we definitely do not have agreement, and how we might move forward. I've had, I've been contacted by several members of the community, former council members and folks who are involved in this deal, who have offered to lend a hand in that. I think their point of view would be very valuable indeed in our discussions, and I would welcome any additional support that they might offer, as well as any ideas you folks may have. So with that said, we will turn it over to you for questions and discussion.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion? Actually, I'm sorry, I've got a, before we do that, before we discuss anything, Robert Rivano would like to address the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting me have a few moments of your time. I'll try to keep it real short. Couple of things. As you know, the project started back wayl before 1994 when we opened. And the Department of Housing and Urban Development prevented us from building the full-size building that we wanted because they felt that we would not be successful. The building as it stands today is the full size that was originally planned. In the first three years of operation, between the staff, which is the key personnel of the whole unit, down to the janitors, the people in the laundry room and everything, they are the ones that make this project. Within three years, we were operating very successfully, to the point that HUD provided us with a national award. It was the staff over there that earned that, and we definitely would like to see that continue. I was very happy to hear what Mr. Malby was saying because that seems to be quite a change, and I welcome it. We have always been open to being able to talk about this. Originally, I would like to clarify two things. One, in the staff report, it indicates that the interest payments and the fact that San Carlos Development Corporation has not made the payments to the city, that's correct. But we have been making payments, issuing a check, putting it in a separate account, the money is there. And what we had asked for originally, when the state did away with the RDA, we asked for an indemnity agreement because I don't think anybody in the state, city, county, or anybody really understood what was going on. All we wanted was an indemnity agreement to say, basically, that the city is taking over from the RDA and that we need to make the payment to the city. If something comes up that the law is written incorrectly or is deemed, that's deemed incorrect, that we are not held liable for making the payment to the city. That was what we had asked for right from the very beginning. We had a meeting in June of 2012. We invited Mr. Malby to come over and visit the facility, and we had a luncheon meeting there discussing this. And at one point in the meeting, he said, "We'll get you an indemnity agreement, not a problem." We never saw an indemnity agreement until, basically, February of this year. That was the first time we saw it, and we had asked for it a number of times. When the indemnity agreement was presented to us, it was presented at the meeting here in City Hall, and they were hoping, basically, that we would sign it. Obviously, nobody signs a legal document immediately without reading it and proofing it. And we have, and are ready to make some suggestions to that. But it was interesting to find that the indemnity agreement was drafted back in November of 2012, and we didn't see it until sometime in February. As far as the RDA loan, Mr. Malby indicated that there's a question as to whether we owe that money to the RDA, its successor, whatever. We have never questioned the validity of that legal obligation of the San Carlos Development Corporation to the RDA at all. That's an obligation. We will take care of it. As I said earlier, the money is sitting in a separate account. Get us the indemnity agreement. We will give you a check the same day. No problem. When the Grove was built, the city was actually released from an obligation because the bonds were paid off. This actually was a benefit to the city because of the fact that their obligation, their legal obligations for debt decreased by the amount of the bonds so that they had more borrowing power. To me, that was a great help to the city itself. As far as representation on our board, originally, our recording secretary was Lisa Costa Sanders, who was working for the city. She recorded all of our minutes. Mike Garvey, who was the city manager at the time, saw them, I'm sure, every month because he would make comments on different things and saying, "That sounds good, we agree," or "I'm not sure about that, but why are you doing it that way?" And we would respond, and he would go along with it, generally speaking. So the city had representation by Lisa. Then when Lisa left working with the board, Bob Lanzone. Then when Lisa left working with the board, Bob Lanzone, your city attorney at that time, became a representative of the city, not as a secretary or anything of that nature, but he was attending all of our meetings. Subsequent to that, Mr. Greg Gruvins, your current city attorney, attended up until recently, and he stopped only because he felt there was going to be somewhat of a conflict of interest. The main thing here is, if, not if, we would like to see that indemnity agreement. We will be more than willing to provide our revision of it. We would be more than happy to start making the payments. Technically, the payments should not be made monthly, as we've been doing all along, according to the HUD agreement. And I agree with what Mr. Malpigh was saying and Mr. Sawicki about the total transaction. I don't know if you have ever seen the diagram of that transaction. It makes the diagramming of the constitution look simple. It is a very difficult situation that was handled at that point in time. Whether any of us agree with what was done and how it was done, that's immaterial now. The history book is written. But we have been doing this. Now, this coming June, we will be operational for 17 years. The money that's in the residual receipts, that 5.4 million, we can't touch it without HUD approval. And the only way that we can get their approval is if we needed to add on to our building, pay off the RDA loan, because that's where it was supposed to come from originally as security for the RDA loan. And there was always a question by HUD as to whether there would be any money in that account, because they didn't feel we were going to be successful. We've been very fortunate, good community. We've had good support from the city, no question there. So with that, I would love to have some very good meetings, some upfront, honest statements made by both sides. Let's go forward and not worry about taking over a project, because I know a lot of the residents right now are concerned, and some of the staff too, and we don't want that because it's the staff that makes that facility. And those of us who are on the board, between all of us, we have devoted probably well over the equivalent of 100 years of service to this city, between commissions, being on the council, being mayors, et cetera. We're devoted to the city. We live here, we love it, we want to keep it the way it is. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Okay, now we can have discussion. Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, actually, probably not strictly speaking, a discussion item per se, although I'm sure we'll get into that pretty quickly. Actually, I do have one procedural thing I need to deal with. Mr. Rubens, my father-in-law is resident of the Elms, and I know you and I have talked about this before, but I just want to make sure that there's no problem with me participating in this discussion.
Well, on this question, I think I can answer, because we have discussed the facts, and you are, your father-in-law is there, and he's not a dependent of yours.
No, he is not.
So that would mean that there's no conflict of interest on this item. And while I'm here, I just wanted to clarify one thing about the reason we have Nicole Murphy at the staff table is because I do have a conflict, having been the general advisor to the Elms Board and currently the city attorney for San Carlos. So I wanted to clarify that for the record, because the way the presentation went, I didn't get to say that before. So that's why Ms. Murphy and I switched positions.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly say, Mr. Mayor, that one of the things I've learned from talking to Mr. Hayesloop and with Mr. Davids before our meeting, was commented on, touched on by Mr. Malpigh. We owe not only the staff of the Elms and the executive director there, but we owe the board of the SDC a lot of thanks for all the work and time you've put in. And it's clearly, I don't think anybody disputes that it's a wonderful asset and a great aspect of the community, and I'm not being critical of any of my predecessors. It may be, you know, a lot of times when things run very smoothly and well, nobody notices them, you know. But I just want you to know that, speaking for myself, I very much appreciate it, and I know the community does too. So that's maybe small recompense for years of devoted service and not being recognized, but thank you.
Any discussion down here? I too have talked to a lot of people in the last few days, a lot of former council members. And one thing that's become very evident to me is that we're, listen, we are extremely lucky in this town, not only to have the people we have in it and the leadership, but people on this, on the SDC board, I've known them all for as long as I can remember being in this town. And I don't for a question, or for a moment, question any of their leadership, their motives, their actions, their integrity, their honesty. All I want is for a workable solution that everybody can live with and so that we can move on. And I hope that that, and I trust, actually, I know that will happen as we move forward.
I just want to disclose that, similar to Councilmember Olbert, but not quite as far along the line family-wise, I made a visit to the Elms last Friday for personal reasons having to do with a recent change in my mother's health and home care situation. And it was purely on a personal basis. And I also spent some time talking with Mr. Davids about the Elms and about the Development Corporation. And I think, you know, we've got the intent out here. It sounds like everyone's saying the right words about the direction we want to go in, and yet we seem to have not made much progress over the last period of time that we've been working on this. So I really hope that by bringing it up and dealing with it in this format, that we will move it forward and get a resolution so that we can all invest our time and energy in what's happening at the Elms in the way that's most productive for the staff and the employees over there.
Okay. Going down the line.
You know, as my fellow council members have said, I personally have known each one of those people for a minimum of probably 19 or 20 years, as neighbors, as colleagues. Again, as Mr. Collins said, there's no question in my mind that people are trying to do the right thing. Who knows, I might be living there someday, perhaps sooner rather than later. But there is an issue before us here, and I'm going to speak to it, being in the position that I'm in. I think that what is being proposed by staff is a tool. It's not a, as Mr. Malpigh said, it's not something that any of us want to carry through on one of the three options. But it is a tool for the city, and it is something that perhaps will, I don't know whether nudge is the right word, on both sides, get folks talking again to, not that they weren't talking, but maybe a little bit more specifically. It's not something that I would, if I had been, you know, in charge of the world, I probably would have locked the door and just gotten a couple of people in the room, and you don't get out until it's decided. But it didn't work out that way. So I want to make sure that everybody understands, the community as well as representatives of the SDC, that this council member has no intention of interrupting a span of leadership that Mr. Rovano said, and I agree, can equal 100 years, or decisions that were made. But as he also said, they were history decisions. I think Mr. Malpigh's point to bring in some outside folks that perhaps were there at the original time, to lend a little bit of historical, or a little bit of history to it, is a good idea. I think some thoughts, again, not saying that it's current, but it does give some background. So I will be supporting the motion, again, in not any way negative way, but I do feel that this will hopefully help us to move forward in a more productive way.
All right. So just as a matter of disclosure, since everybody's talked about who they've talked to prior to being here on the dais, the only person I've talked to is Jerry Ernst. Had a couple of phone conversations with him. So for the council, what's before us is these three alternatives, which we could take a motion on either one of them.
Through the mayor, if I may.
Yes.
They're not three individual alternatives.
No, I understand that.
Part of one recommendation.
Right, but under alternatives, it says there's three things that we can do. One of them is do nothing, right? So you're talking about A, B, and C, and I'm talking about 1, 2, 3.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. So, yes.
Oh, actually, I was going to do two things. One, I was going to ask, make a motion that we extend the meeting to 10:45.
Second.
All right. You got a second, roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember Klepper, Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokhot.
Yes. And the second thing?
The other thing I was just going to suggest is, and I realize I'm sort of attempting to split the baby here a little bit, I agree with the comments, all the comments, that Councilmember Grisilli made. I too support having staff going ahead, continuing to research things on the option exercise side. I don't know that I necessarily feel the need to make a formal motion about that, because I think, I may be wrong about this, but I think staff can actually undertake that effort without a formal motion, which might be a little bit less disruptive to the discussion environment. And then I separately was going to suggest, or going along with that, was going to suggest that it might be useful for the council to think about asking two of our number to join Mr. Malpigh in these discussions as an ad hoc subcommittee, to further those discussions along, and as a visible recognition or visible presence of how significant we think this is. I think we've all commented on how significant it is and how important it is that we want to make sure things get back to an even keel.
I would like to hear from Madam Attorney on that suggestion. Do we need a resolution to have staff do A, B, or C, move forward on A, B, or C?
You would need a resolution to have staff move forward on... Excuse me. I'm sorry. You would need to adopt the resolution to have staff, to authorize staff to move forward on the items set forth in this resolution. You could direct, you could do two things. You could modify the resolution to limit the activities staff undertake to prerequisite activities. That's one option. Or you could simply direct staff to undertake those prerequisites. But the steps outlined in the resolution should be adopted by resolution.
Okay.
Can I ask for a little enlargement on that as to why? I mean, maybe I'm using the wrong mental map, or mental mapping, but I know you may not be as familiar with some of our procedures here. We very frequently ask staff to research things, basically to bring back potential action items to us, without adopting formal resolutions, saying, "Please go do that." It's a discussion and sort of by consensus, and staff takes the interpretation and moves forward. So I'm trying to understand what's unique or different about this situation.
I think what is unique or different about this situation is that there are, because it is a very complicated transaction, and because what we're looking at is effectuating the city's rights under this long-term option agreement, and that involves a number of analyses of federal and state requirements, and agencies involved with the federal and state requirements. And in order to provide the authority to vest the city manager with the authority to engage in those discussions in a real venue, it's important to have the authorization by resolution.
While you're thinking about that, Ms. Klepper has a question.
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number...
17?
17, authorizing the city managers to make actions necessary to effectuate the rights of the city under that certain long-term option to purchase agreement pertaining to the San Carlos Elms.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to briefly say that I will be voting against the resolution, because while I very much appreciate council's input, I actually don't think it's, I'm not sure I agree with the conclusion of it. But thank you.
So I want to put forth a question in terms of something to discuss. We may or may not put it into the resolution, and that has to do with the indemnity agreement and talks about that. Do we want to include something that directs that Mr. Malpigh, or perhaps we could bring in what your idea is, that Mr. Malpigh and a couple of council members do meet with the Elms Board to discuss the indemnity agreement?
I think...
Do you want to comment on that?
Through the mayor, if I may. I mean, if that's the desire of the city council in terms of the discussions that'll go on, then I don't think you necessarily need to amend the resolution as much as just give me that direction in your comments tonight, and I'll make sure that that's the process I use as we have those discussions.
How do you...
The indemnity agreement, actually, despite what Mr. Rovano said, is with the, we're waiting to get it back and have been for several weeks from the San Carlos Development Corporation.
Sure.
They have it.
Okay. If I may, Mr. City Manager, your feeling about having two council members be a part of that process, can you comment on that?
I think if it's something that the council is interested and comfortable in getting involved in, then I certainly don't have any issue. I think the more folks we put around the table, likely the better. It may be a slightly uncomfortable position for council members. It's not your typical run-of-the-mill subcommittee assignment, but, you know, certainly, I think if it's something the council would like to be involved in, we can certainly make that happen.
Now, we can make that happen without an action item on it, creating an ad hoc?
I, excuse me, I think you'd just simply, as part of this item, make a separate motion, appointing two people to an ad hoc committee that's related to this item directly. Am I incorrect?
Okay, so that item is open for discussion then.
So is this a committee that would just be of two council members, or is this something where these two council members would be part of a committee that perhaps Mr. Malpigh would have other people from the community be part of?
Other people from the community? No, just...
I think, as Mr. Malpigh had suggested earlier, that there might be some people who were involved with this project earlier on and would have a better...
I don't think they would be committee members, that's just a matter of the city manager inviting those persons into the discussion.
Okay, and that helps you, because I wasn't clear on what your intent was for this, for the committee.
Just that we would assign two council members to be a part of the process, that's all.
Okay. And I have to say that I'm perfectly comfortable with Mr. Malpigh directing the efforts, continuing to direct the efforts on a staff basis, but if he would like to have a task force of people... have a task force of people who have been past city councilmembers previously involved with the Elms, or for that matter, current city councilmembers, I guess I would, since he's been working with it on a day-to-day basis.
Again...
I would like to get more input from him in terms of how his preference would be, and how to move forward.
If I may, he can invite anybody he wants to the meetings. Our only concern is, do we have two members from this body be a part of that process and assigned to that process? We can either go that route or not go that route.
And through the chair, if I may, if we do, I guess we're not technically amending the resolution.
Make it another...
But if we're going to scope it out in the sense of the way we've talked about, that changes my view of whether I support it or not. Because I do think it's important that we have council representation in the process.
You answered my question before I could ask it. Thank you.
Okay. So we have two options before us, I guess. One is that we just simply by consensus say to the city manager, we would like you to further discussions, which he's going to do anyways, on the indemnity agreement. Or we can go further and actually take an action and assign two councilmembers to an ad hoc. And that would, two councilmembers that would be assigned to that task of being a part of all these meetings.
Through the chair, though, where does the resolution come in on your two options?
Well, that's what I asked, if we could do that. And I was told, yes, we could.
Are you saying, then, that the resolution...
No, we would still vote on the resolution.
We vote on the resolution and...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, I just didn't understand quite where you're in there.
Okay.
So if I may ask a question, just to clarify it for myself. I'm not, I guess what you're suggesting, Mr. Mayor, is we, in either case, we vote on the resolution. It's, in one scenario, we're voting on the resolution, and we're also giving staff direction to say, we would like the indemnity issue.
Continued.
Continued.
Right.
And in the other scenario, we're also voting on the resolution, but we're saying, in addition to working on the indemnity issue, we are also going to appoint two members of the council to participate in your discussions.
No.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to...
In fact, what we could do is just go ahead and vote on the, we have a motion and a second. And we could go ahead and vote on that right now.
Right.
After we vote on it, just by consensus, under discussion, we could say, and we would like the city manager to continue to work with the Elms Board on the indemnity issue. We could simply do that by short discussion, say, yes, that's where we want them to go. We want that resolved. Or our second option is to say, by a second motion, and, you know, taking action on that motion would be to create an ad hoc that would follow this process.
So it would almost be, you could almost get both, though, couldn't you, Mr. Mayor? In that you would say, you would, and maybe I'm wrong here of how you're thinking it, if we vote on the resolution, up or down, whatever, and then we advise the city manager, we want him to continue to working on the indemnity, and couldn't we also, it's not either or, we can also...
Attach it to the motion.
Attach two more people. In other words, it doesn't have to be either or. It doesn't have to be by himself. It can be with all of us. It depends on how we would...
And do it. Through the mayor, if I may. I think the easiest way to do it would just be to take it as three different motions.
Okay.
You know, and cover it. In my mind, the indemnity one isn't particularly a big issue.
Because you're going to do it anyways.
And I think it's part and parcel to this, the whole issue that we're talking about, it's very close to the heart of it. So, you know, in my mind, we really couldn't reach any sort of resolution without talking about and resolving the indemnity and payment issue. That's right at the heart of this thing. But if you'd like to make it clear, I'd just do a separate motion, and then it's...
Seems like it's clear enough. But I'll leave it to the council. What are we going to do here?
So, well, do we want to table the resolution motion and do a motion about the ad hoc subcommittee so that everyone knows how that sits before the resolution comes up? Is there any particular order in which councilmembers would like to?
Since I think I'm the only person who probably is theoretically on the fence, depending upon how that comes out, and, you know, I may live to regret this, but I'm happy to vote on the motion that's in front of us and then deal with the ad hoc subcommittee afterwards. Because we do have a motion and a second in front.
Head of clerk, let's have roll call on the motion.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay. Let's take up the, it seems the indemnity issue is a non-issue. Mr. Malpey's heard enough discussion on that. I don't think we need a motion. But on the issue of whether or not we assign two councilmembers to follow this process and be a part of the meetings, let's take that up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would, I'd make a motion, then, that we, as a council, assign two members of the council to be a part of whatever discussions Mr. Malpey has to resolve this issue. Is that clear enough?
Clear enough.
Second.
All right. Let's have discussion on that. Who might be interested in that?
At the risk of sounding self-centered, I would be interested in being on that subcommittee.
Pass it. We need to know that we have two people who are interested.
I'd also be interested, but I would also defer to anybody else who feels that they may be more qualified, such as Mr. Grisilli, or even yourself, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Or Ms. Clapper.
Didn't want to exclude you.
I think you were referring to the two councilmembers who have been on the council a little bit longer, perhaps, in inviting them to express their interest.
Picking up on that.
And I'd be more than happy to serve, but I'm not pushing for it. So if you would like...
Okay. Who made the motion, then?
Member of the committee, go for it.
Myself and Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins made the motion, I think.
Okay. Why don't you amend your own motion to include yourselves on the committee?
All right. I would amend the motion that we appoint Mr. Olbert and myself. Can I do that?
Yes, you can. Sure.
To this, to any ad hoc committee, or whatever this group of individuals is going to be identified as.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay. We got through that. Now we're back at the consent calendar. So Ms. Mendenhall, sorry to keep you so late.
It's okay.
I only asked that you would run through this, so that I can, so that we can understand it. You gave us another version, and I'm just wondering how this affects basically the bottom line. So if you can hit that, I'd be happy from there.
Yes. So the revision in front of you, in the fiscal year 2012-2013 column on Table 1, on net allocation and transfers, there was a copy-paste error, and we had inadvertently put 1.5 million in the second quarter year-to-date actual, and it should be a negative 2,169 to include the $3 million transfer that I had talked about earlier to the capital fund. That results in a net change in fund balance of a negative 2,303.
Mm-hmm.
Which is still on target for where we expect to be in budget. So although there was a change in the table, the end result is we still are on track with budget.
I'm sorry, we're still what?
We're still on track with where we're expecting to be for budget.
Okay. So we end up in the hole with the general...
It's the one-time transfer from that $3 million. That's why it reflects as a negative number. We just have to move it out of the fund balance. And in order to make that happen, doing the debits and credits, we just have to, it reflects as a negative.
I see.
But this is what we were projecting, and everything is on target.
Okay. All right. And that was the only change. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to make a motion to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
May I ask?
Yeah. Go ahead. Thank you.
Because actually, yes, the question, which is why I wanted to pull up, I had one other one. And I am not looking to rake anybody over the coals, but have we determined what it is that caused the error to take place? And are we thinking about procedures on how to...
Yes, we've already changed our process.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to make a motion to approve Item 7D, then.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay. It seems to me we pulled something else. What was it?
H and H.
H, okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Second.
Okay. I think on this item, I'm just left a little confused because the changes we made to this document, and then the action we took tonight, so exactly where we are.
So the projections that we presented earlier tonight include these adjustments to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
The payment for the Belmont-San Carlos obligations will not be made until later this week, because we couldn't make a payment until you ratified the budget.
Okay. But this was accounted for?
It's accounted for in the projections, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, we had a fire board meeting, and Mr. Collins and I, we went over, not that you shouldn't ask questions, don't get me wrong, but...
No, I understand.
But we went over all of this, and I think both of us understood what was going on, is that there's lingering costs that we're going to have to continue to pay for a number of years.
Okay. All right. entertain a motion on it?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the resolution ratifying the proposed budget for fiscal year 2012-14 for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, and amend the City of San Carlos fiscal year 2012-2014 appropriations budgets.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just, to your point, Mr. Grisilli, sometimes I still go back. I don't let go of it as easily.
I understand.
And I go back, and I try to add these things up and get an account of, gee, we got rid of a fire department that was costing us. Last budget was 6.3 million. I know the staff report said that the forecast for the next year was somewhere in the 8 million range. But when I start adding all these things into what we're paying Redwood City, what we're costing ourselves to have our own fire department, what we're paying for these past accounts, it gets really close to where we were. And I think of the fact that, okay, now we have a fire department, at least currently, we've got a fire department that's made up of two stations and an engine in each station. Whereas before, yeah, we were, maybe we were forecasted to pay more if we couldn't come to terms with the labor agreements. But at least we had two stations, we had an engine, we had a truck, we had another engine, we had a hazmat unit. We had it going. And now we're paying nearly as much, but all we have is, like I said, two stations and...
I can't disagree with you, but unfortunately, what happens in this day is, we had that discussion, and I voted a certain way, but there were three other people who aren't on this council anymore.
Right.
Who defeated us on that. And we're sort of like, that was then, and this is now.
This is now.
And so we have to deal with what we have to deal with. But I concur with a lot of your comments, but not much we can do, except we have to take care of what we have.
Well, if I may, though, I think it's still appropriate to ask the questions, because while we don't own a time machine to go back and change anything, we can certainly learn from it.
You certainly can. It's just...
Things like this item in particular, with the residual Calper stuff.
Right.
That was something that wasn't contemplated in the original analysis. And if we ever were to do something like that again, and I'm on the council, I'm sure everybody else will, that's going to be question number one.
The questions were asked, and the answers were, we don't know. And we can go to the Calpers and ask them, but they don't know yet. You know, it takes years for the information to come out and so forth, so...
And after they give you the answer, they change the...
That's right.
Right. Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. So I think that's our last item. We're adjourned.
See you in the morning.